Okay, you have before you a copy of the modified agenda. There is one proposed revision that I have. That's at the request of the city attorney on page five, item E1 under Electric Department, the request for authorization for the mayor to sign the new TV PPA joint use agreement with AT&amp;T. Chris, would you like to speak to why it needs a little revision?
Sure. It had a way it sent, or tried to send that contract to me via email a couple of days ago. It never went through via email and we found that out today. I haven't had a chance to review it yet. And so if it is approved, it just needs to be approved pending my review and approval.
So one way to do this would be just to amend the item and leave it on consent to that effect.
Alderman Corey?
Do you have a motion for that?
It doesn't have to be, but if you want to craft something.
Well, I mean, I would be fine with it saying that what it says now, upon content, contingent upon approval by the city attorney.
Alderman Corey has suggested to revise the agenda to add to item E1 on page five, contingent upon the approval of the city attorney. Is that your proposed revision? Is there any objection to that proposed revision? And leave it on consent?
Mr. Mayor, is that an urgency to do that? Not speaking against, was that an urgency to do that way that we've done in the past? Was that an urgency to sign this right away?
No, I don't think so. And I think the big thing, I guess you may be asking whether it should just come back on the agenda on May 4th.
Yeah, it's fine with the gentleman. We normally do it that way. We have done it way in the past if there's an urgency to do it, but you know, but we don't want to rush the city attorney to do it, but whatever he feels comfortable with. But I can go with either one because it's basically saying that it'd be subject to the city attorney's approval, but if there's no urgency, it could just come back for it. But this is nothing we want to just spend a lot of time on. But I support your motion, gentleman Ford. Okay? And Mr. Mayor, one other thing on the agenda.
Hold on one second. Let me just make sure we've got the revision on that. So the revision is to leave it on consent agenda, adding contingent upon the approval of the city attorney. Do I hear any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Alderman Perkins?
Yes, sir. On page four, J, what's this approval of resolution adopting section three plan I just got here? What's that all about? Housing Urban Development Act of six days, I mean, what's all that about?
Alderman Dumas, is that related to the?
No.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, that is related to the fire station. That is a compliance factor.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Benson is in the audience.
But that's fine. You don't tell me enough. That's good. Okay, that's good. Okay.
Further proposed revisions?
Ms. Sproul, on number of page four about this, is Mr. White here?
Yes, sir.
Carlton, okay. Right, okay. I just want to make sure. Very good. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have some items I'd like to move to the consent agenda.
Okay.
And one item that I'd like to move to the consent agenda, contention upon the city attorney's opinion. I would like on page four, item 10F, I should ask you if that's all right, consideration of the adoption of an employment mark recognition program, to move that to the consent agenda.
Okay.
Under department business items B1, 2, and 3.
And those are under building?
Yes. And then back on page four, item 10G, actually rather than to move that to consent, to take that off the agenda if the city attorney can offer an opinion on whether or not we're compelled to seek that opinion.
Okay. Let's get through the first ones and then let's address that issue. So the first proposal is to place item 10F on page four and item 11B1 on page four, as well as 11B2 and 11B3 on page five on the consent agenda. Is that the proposal?
It is.
Is there any objection placing those items on the consent agenda?
Unless there's any discussion needed on the resolution, it's just been added. I'd like to add that as well to the consent agenda.
Hold on one second. Let's do one thing at a time. Is there any objection to that wave of? Any objection? Okay. Please note those changes in your agenda. Now let's get through the discussion on item 10G.
And that's something that during the busyness and lateness of our last meeting, we didn't properly address. And I'm not sure that Mr. Latimer had sufficient time to research it since that came of late. Is there anything that compels us to seek this opinion?
Not by the express wording of the ordinance on point. In looking at the ordinance, I had four concerns with it. The first two concerns have been alleviated in correspondence and communication between Ben Griffith and myself. My third and fourth concerns, the ordinance only applies in riverine situations. Riverine is not defined in the ordinance. Therefore, the basic tenet of the law being that the common definition would control. Webster's Dictionary, the new lexicon Webster's Dictionary defines riverine as "of or pertaining to a river or the banks of a river," which I would interpret the carver ditch falling outside the context of that definition. In communication with Mr. Griffith and Mr. Kemp, they've noted to me that in classes they've taken as city planners and engineers, riverine can mean anything involving water. But no other definition of riverine has been provided to me by FEMA or MEMA or anybody else. So we're left with what the ordinance says in its general definition, which leads me to believe that the carver ditch would not fall within the definition of riverine. The second issue I have with it, which was actually my fourth concern, was the word alteration. Alteration is not defined in the ordinance. We don't know whether alteration means changing the course or direction, or whether it merely means changing intensity of the flow, because that word is also ambiguous. I can't say that the ordinance compels notice based on its express language.
So Alderman Sustra, where does that lead you?
If the city attorney is saying that language does not compel us to seek this opinion, I would remove this item from the agenda.
Okay. So the proposed revision is to remove item 10G from the agenda. Any objection to that? Any objection? Objection seeing none? Item 10G has been removed from the agenda. Now Alderman Dumas, I believe you had a proposed revision?
Yeah. If no discussion is needed, maybe Ms. Sproul can help us on this, on 10J. I'd like to add that to the consent agenda as well.
Okay. Ms. Sproul?
It is somewhat performative. She may not have made it in the room, but I hope it might be a while before we got to this item. It is performant, associated with fire section five. It's part of that checklist of things that we need to go through in order to comply with receiving that grant of the grant fund. So I think you'd be comfortable with it.
So it's fairly procedural.
Yes. And Ms. Benson drafted it. I placed it under the city's logo and created an issue and drafted it. So it means the climate says, Ms. Benson, is it?
I'd like that to be placed on the consent.
All right. The proposal is to place item 10J on page four on consent. Is there any objection to that? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, please note the change on your agenda. Any further proposed revision? Alderman Vaughn?
Page six, F1, move from the consent agenda.
And excuse me, if I may, Alderman, that needs to be deleted and held until the next meeting. We have one more item to put off.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you like it off of consent, or would you like to remove it from the agenda?
Move from the agenda.
Okay. Proposal is to remove item F1 on page six from the agenda. Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Please note the change. All right. Further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Alderman Vaughn?
Mr. Mayor, have you got the termination of the bus till the date for the board members? Find another date. She don't feel. Find another date.
The what now?
On your comments?
Yes.
On the morning Saturday, June 5th, 10, termination to the bus, date for the board member.
Yeah, those two ran together. That June 5th date is actually in reference to power outage. What I'm going to do on that is just ask for potential times that work for y'all. Further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? All right. Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda is revised would be in order.
Some of.
Motion's been made by Alderman Corey to approve the agenda is revised. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Alderman Vaughn, all of us in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us opposed, please signify by saying nay. Is there any objection to the consent agenda as modified? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? The consent agenda is approved. Okay. We have no minutes before us tonight, so we'll move to announcements and comments. And the first announcement I have is an announcement for the board, but also for the general public. And that is the electric department is going to be replacing transformers on May 5th and June 5th. And this is a significant event because it is going to cause some power outages in the early hours of the morning. Now, different parts of the city are going to experience different durations. My understanding is the longest power outage will be in the southeast portion of town, no, excuse me, southwest portion of town. Slightly less time in the southeast portion of town. And then most of North Starkville will experience very little, if any, power outage. And that's going to be from 3:00 AM to 5:00 AM on the mornings of May 5th and June 5th. And next, I just would like to generally discuss, maybe look at calendars. Something Alderman Vaughn suggested that I think is an excellent idea is taking a bus tour, looking at the physical issues that each of you deal with in your wards every day, having the city engineer with us to talk about different things, as well as board members talking and actually laying eyes on the issues that we've got throughout the city. Y'all, we don't have to set a date tonight. I guess I'd like a little feedback. Is everybody amenable to that? And do you have times that work better? I guess is this something you would want to do more immediately, within the next couple of weeks? Or would you rather do it within the next month and then we can set a firm time at the next meeting? Alderman Carver?
I think it's a great idea. If we could, just try to do it one afternoon would be at best for me, not take off the whole day, maybe start at 1:00 o'clock and then we can run through 7 or 8:00 if we need to.
Are there any potential days that are better generally than others of the week? Like sometimes I guess Friday's a good day, or you know, Saturday, anything like that? Need to know and maybe we can come back with?
I'd rather do it during the week.
During the week?
Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday? Would anybody have issues if we started on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday at about 1:00?
Just me, I work six days a week, sometimes seven. So I mean, I just have to, you know, I'm practicing law weekdays, but I'll be flexible. Just let me know when you want me.
Would you rather do it on the weekend?
Weekend would be better, but you know, there are a lot of diverse schedules. Just tell me, I'll make it happen.
Okay.
It's important.
Okay. All right. All right. And one other thing that perhaps could be included with this, and I guess this is why I wanted to leave this kind of open ended. We have a copyback of our written strategic plan document from the planning retreat. Ideally, I think that needs a little more work and a work session before we bring it back for adoption. There's some things I can see already that probably need to be tweaked. Would y'all be amenable to maybe rolling those two together? Where we go on a bus tour and then take some time to look at the strategic plan? Okay. What we'll do is we'll toss some dates out for the next meeting and look at setting that down. Next, I'd like to introduce our new employees. We have three new employees that I'd like to introduce tonight. And the first two are going to be from the sanitation department. And they are Darren Robinson and Jesse McNeil. Darren's a native of Starkville. He actually started in February as a temporary driver and has done an excellent job. Darren and his wife Chastity have four children, two boys and two girls. In their spare, in his spare time, Darren enjoys fishing. Jesse is graduate of Ackerman High School. After high school, Jesse attended Ackerman Vocational Trade School. He also attended two years of Bible college and graduated from truck driving school at EMCC. Jesse likes to do carpentry work and is very active in his church. Jesse and Janice have four children, including three sons, who are all in the Marines. They also have five grandchildren. Now please join me in welcoming Jesse and Darren. And our next employee is Stephanie Halbert. And Stephanie is the new general clerk receptionist with the city clerk's office. She's originally from Crawford, a graduate of Beale Moore High School, and she was very active at Beale Moore. She was Miss Moore High, and she was voted class president, was active on the girls' basketball team. Stephanie received an associate degree from East Mississippi Community College and a bachelor of science from Mississippi University of Women, for women. While in school, she was active in modeling, choir, and the school newspaper. She is currently enrolled in at MUW where she is working on a second bachelor's in general business. Previously, Stephanie worked for seven years at Seitel. And Stephanie attends Pleasant Grove Missionary Baptist Church where she is the assistant clerk and sings in the choir. And she's also the proud parent of three children. Please join me in welcoming Stephanie. And the last thing I have is I have asked Chief Man to give us a report on fire issues. And the reason I've done this is probably very obvious, and that is that we have had an inordinate number of structure fires in this community over the last five months. Let me take the moment to say that I am very, very proud of our fire department, and you should be too. They are amongst the most well-trained group of firefighters you'll find in the state of Mississippi. They have helped develop some of the most proactive fire safety and prevention ordinances that you'll find anywhere in the state. And I assure you, they have been working round the clock to assess the current situation and look at ways to mitigate risk in the future. And Chief, would you like to brief everybody?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Board, and thank you for allowing me to address you and the public on this. So taking in consideration the recent fires that our city has experienced over the last four months, I just, I felt it necessary to update you regarding fire department actions and what we're doing. The main point of this, of the update is to give you, you and the citizens, a brief overview of more of why these fires occurred and any possible correlation or likeness. And there are none. There's no tie to any of these fires. I think we should maybe just briefly look at the four fires and just get an idea of what actually occurred. But of the four fires that occurred in our city limits, and I'm not referring to the fire that occurred outside this past Sunday, but of the four fires that occurred inside our city limits, three of those fires were directly caused by some type of human error. And it was some various reasons, but they were all directly related to some type of human error. None of the fires, absolutely none of these fires involved arson. The arson as a cause of fire was dismissed very early on in all four fires. The fire that occurred on April 6th, our last scheduled board meeting, would may have not even made the newspaper had there not been a 20-plus mile an hour wind pushing it, which gusts at times to 38 miles an hour. And let me tell you, or thank you now for being proactive, Alderman Perkins and Alderman Corey, in your past administration as far as the ladder truck, because those trucks made the difference at that fire. If it hadn't been for those ladder trucks, then it would have been a totally different Over the past few months, our department's been in contact with over 70 departments around the southeast. We do this to try to avoid reinventing the wheel, just to get feedback from other departments as to how they're doing things and how they view and what's going on in their city. Several things have been identified, and our staff is putting together some things that we want to present to you at a later date, but at this time, we still are studying them and want to make sure that they fit our needs here before we present them to you. But the most important thing I think that you should know is the most proactive measure that we heard in all of these conversations, we have already done. We did in 2007 when we passed the sprinkler ordinance. So we're out in front again on trying to be proactive as far as preventing these type of fires. Also, on January 25th of this year, our fire marshals, who are out in the hall now doing occupancy load checks for us, those gentlemen got together, had the idea that they would, they wanted to have more of a public gathering and just allow the public to ask questions and they would answer those questions. And it was a tremendous crowd that showed up with a lot of interest, and they want to continue this. And we're going to, right now, it's, we're going to try to do it at least twice a year and more if the interest keeps growing. But it was a huge success, and I'm very proud of them for stepping out of the box and doing that and putting theirself out there for just a question and answer and was tireless in seeing that through. Really simply put, our city experiences very few fires a year compared to other cities. And we've gotten accustomed to having few fires. So lately, we've had more than our, what we've been accustomed to, and that's what's gotten everything, gotten everybody looking at the fires. So it's not so much, there is no common factor, but if you look for one thing, the only thing that even touches all four of these fires is nothing more than a time span of them occurring in such a short time. And having said that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Questions from the board? Are there any questions?
I'm just committing you and thanking you and your men for being, doing such a good job on these fires that happened so rapidly to us. Just commend you and your staff.
We've got a great group of guys, and I will tell you that we had an issue yesterday where the training that you're allowing our guys to go do over the past years played a huge part in the firefighter not getting injured yesterday. He had an issue where a breathing apparatus failed on him while he was inside the structure fire. And their training kicked in. He did not panic, and his two cohorts with him got him outside without any injuries or anything. So I'm very proud of him.
Anything else from the board? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any comments from the members of the board?
I got one, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This carver drive ditch had caused more attention than when we were trying to pass alcohol sale on Sunday. It caused so much attention. And I'm just, it ponders my mind why it caused so much attention, because the peoples in wars six and seven are taxpayers too. You can take their taxpayer dollars and do whatever you want with them, but it seemed like you can't take their taxpayer dollars and fix this ditch. It causes so much problem in there. And it oppressed a lot of these peoples. And I know by me reading the Bible and when Egyptians oppressed, it was like something bad happened. And it just feel like something bad going to happen because we have oppressed those peoples, something they've been trying to get done for 21 years. And the past boards sit here, they passed it, fixed the ditch. We passed it, fixed the ditch. But now when time comes, it causing so much problem, and these peoples are still oppressed simply because they pay taxes like everyone else, but they can't get the ditch fixed. But you want to fix it the way you want to fix it, but you don't want to fix it the way we voted to fix it. Pipe it, cover it up. That's the way the past board voted to fix it. That's the way we voted to fix it. But it's so much problem. But you can take their tax dollar, do anything else you want with it, but you can't take their tax dollar and go back to the community and fix what they need fixing.
Are there any further comments from the members of the board? Any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments. And any citizen wishing to make comment may be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Allen Ward, South. To the mayor and board. The things that are happening lately, it really stressing the people out. When they integrated in 61, our Mayville High School, they bought schools down. Had to be rebuilt. That's very stressful on people. The school board issue, we need to do something, we need to do it now. Because we don't want people to get enraged and start burning down things. Let them got enough fires happening out there. Church sign. The ministers, you don't know anything as of yet about the church sign. You don't want people to think that you don't care about the church. Jefferson Street, let them, that street need to be fixed. I wouldn't want the funeral man, the sheriff lose control of vehicle because of state that that street is in.
Thank you, Mr. Terr. Alderman Carver?
Mr. Kemp, you here? Very briefly, one quick question. Jefferson Street is on the overlay list for this coming project, right? Yes, sir.
We did this today and probably bring that forward for next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp.
Any further citizen comments?
Greg Ivandall, Ward 6, and Jerry Bowman. I'm going to try to hook this up real quick, but you have a quick castle this morning. We're talking tonight about the Pat Station Rebound Extension Project. And we have several concerns which we related to last night in the general session. But one of the points I'd like to bring up is that if you look at this map here, it looks like the crossing here at Pat Station is going to actually be in a floodway, which the city has very specific ordinance for doing that. In fact, if you look at this map, it looks like the top part of this actually touches that old trailer car road here at the very top of it. And if you look at the second and third pages, you see if you go straight across Pat Station, if we can assume that the floodway actually touches the part of Pinkerton Pike Road, that that would be in the flood zone area. And you can see looking at the third page here going across, kind of the same thing. It's like we're going to go across through this area, the low area, which looks to me as though requires some fill to get up to grade with the rest of roads. And based on floodway regulations about prohibiting development, we have concerns about that. I was Saturday night, went out and took some pictures of what that connection looks like. Here's our first picture we have of that, looking at that way. You can see how low it is. And I have to ask you guys a question. If you want to... If you were to build your own house back there and try to hook up a road, driveway into the road, would you actually build your driveway right next to the bridge like that? That doesn't seem like a very, very good place to build a road of this thing. Yeah, right there, you can see what kind of issues you have getting out there. The road's actually gonna probably touch the bridge on one side, right out to this one. And here's approaches, you would get closer actually making a turn. I know Eric, you have a daughter, young daughter is not driving yet, but hopefully, you know, she will in a few years, basically. Would you want her coming up to a road like this, this kind of intersection, where you have the guardrails blocking your view and trying to make a turn left or right? Something like that? And the last picture down, it shows you really about when you get right on it, you know, that guardrail is definitely blocking your view. It's gonna be a fairly dangerous intersection for people wanting to get in and out. So that's some of the concerns I have as far as the project.
Mayor.
Hold on one second. Is that, is that it?
Carver Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
Apparently, no one's understood about that ditch. That ditch is a nuisance. Last week, my neighbor killed a snake. His grandson saw it. Little bit of kid. But he didn't think the kid saw a snake, but he did. And it seems as if we are biting off a bullet trying to get that ditch fixed. Don't nobody want to fix it? You really don't want to fix it. Because to go forty feet, you ain't doing nothing. When you go forty feet and leave it there for another year, just think about it. But it rains soon, that gonna wash away. So you gonna have to turn right back around and do that same spot you did this year, next year. What good is it? It's just regular pouring money into a ditch that you're not doing nothing about. And the Pat Station peoples would like to have the Carver Drive ditch fixed, because they really do not want that road. So therefore, we need that ditch fixed. Up behind me is a church, and lots of kids be there. You look at the area, you can see, but you don't look at all you need to see. Now, we are worried about, it don't make no difference about the color of the kids, but what? The kids that plays at this church, that comes all the way down, and it snakes out. And those mosquitoes are just as dangerous as snakes. And we need that ditch covered all the way instead of forty feet, because you gonna be regularly pouring money out, but you ain't doing nothing.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. Further citizen comments? Hold on, we got two. He was first.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mr. Gordon, Carver Drive, six oh two. I wasn't in the center tonight, but since Mr. Vaughn spoke, something bad gonna happen. Guess what? I thought it happened already, about Sunday morning, about ten o'clock. My granddaddy was about seven years old. Coming, like, granddaddy, granddaddy, come here, a snake out there, that's all, boy. Come on, granddaddy, granddaddy, a snake out there, okay? Snake in between my house and also White House, and Trawal Street, and Roy Bishop's house, got in the head, okay? He thought he kidding. And Roy Bishop come and got me, saw the snake, head sticking up. Okay, took a picture, gone shot. I got, took a picture, I got a hole in that there, I wish I had a drill. Next meeting, I'm gonna bring it back and hold you guys here. When you say something bad happen, you can bet. When you say the Bible says something happened in the Bible, I might be dead and gone, but it gonna happen to somebody that, Nick Vixen, go think.
Mr. Mayor, let me say something briefly.
Alderman.
Mr. Mayor, let me, go ahead and, thank you, Mr. Gordon. I just want to say real briefly, the constituent on Carver Drive, I'm not gonna make a long speech here or talk here, but you know where I stand on this matter, and I'm continuing to do what I can to get this project done as expeditiously as I can, so I just want to make sure we're good on that.
Ms. Morgan.
My name is Dawn Morgan, I live in Trotter Lane, and I'm concerned with the Pat Station Road project. Some of you here, Mayor Perkins, I mean Alderman Perkins, Alderman Doonis, Mayor Wiseman, sorry. Mayor, Alderman Sistrance, some of you were at the public hearing last night, as well as the city engineer, Mr. Kemp, and Ms. Spool. And some of the concerns we had were the width of the road, where the easements would be, where the public utilities would be, and we asked some specific questions to this. And actually, some maps were on the wall and were pointed out. I visited with the public administration over the utilities department today, took my map in, and it turns out that the questions we asked last night could have been answered, but were avoided. And I think that's what all of us citizens out there have troubles. Trusting when we're told that, yes, you will provide a buffer, we will provide a buffer, some of the trees will be left, but this drawing shows that what we were concerned with was in place last night at the meeting. And when we asked, where would the water be put, where would things like that be put, we were told that it was unknown at that time, but it actually was, I mean, we just did not know how to read that. But, you know, we have concerns as to the fact that it will take out every tree against every property line. There will be no buffer at all. Mr. Devlin explained the way that that would happen because of the necessity of the amount of space it takes to put down such a size of a water main, and where it will need to be placed because of the size of the road, the sidewalks, the bike path. And I understand that, because they only having a hundred feet there. And the water main is going to be on the north side for a while, then it's going to cross under the road there and carry on on the south side, because lack of an easement on the north side is...
One minute. You've got one minute.
Okay. So I just had questions, is there any way that the city would consider keeping the entire water main on the north side of that road, rather than crossing it under the road and destroying what little bit of buffer there would be for those of us homeowners with that buffer enclosed? I understand an easement could be taken, it just wasn't. So that was a question that I had and would like to be addressed.
Yeah, and that's, that's something that I don't know the answer to right now. I don't know if Doug has a ready answer right now, but I can tell you there certainly is a sensitivity to disturbing that land as little as possible. Thank you. Further citizen comment? Is there any further citizen comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just bored. I have the trace over on Bluefield Road, and what we have there is a problem with speeders. We don't have no kind of trace sign unless enough to let them know that they're coming by the trace. We have chairs, be out there playing, doing vacations, they don't make no difference what time it is. It can be for a film, and they just, well, I never roll like they own the bypass. And so I'm just wondering, what could you and the board do in front of me saying about that situation that we have on Bluefield Road? Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Pastor Vaughn.
I'm sorry, Ms. Robbin.
Alderman.
Robbin. Are there any speed limit signs there now?
Well, I think it's one down by the, when you're coming out, I believe, at Old Twelve. It's one that's saying, I don't know, thirty-five, forty-five, whatever it is, but they're not observing that sign. You know, from where they ride up and down that road, you might well have one saying sixty-five, a bug. And I just want to know, what could you do, putting up signs? You know, we need to do whatever it takes.
Mr. Mayor, as administrator day-to-day matter, do you think you can have your staff to analyze that and just let us know what you come up with, just for our information?
Yeah, we'll go give it a look and see if there's anything that can mitigate the situation.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Robbin.
Thank you, Pastor Vaughn. Further citizen comments? Are there any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll move to public appearances. And we have four public appearances scheduled tonight. The first is by Elizabeth Stevens, representing the Polo Apartments over signage issue. Is Ms. Stevens here? Is Ms. Stevens here? Get somebody to check and see if she's outside. Elizabeth Stevens. Okay. All right, the second public appearance scheduled is the annual report from Dora Harry, Chair of Planning and Zoning.
As you know, planning and zoning are required to make an annual report, and this is our annual report for this year. And the chapter two, article five, section two, one thirty-eight of the city's code of ordinance is one that dictates this. So this is a summary of what we have done since we made this last report. We approved five change of zoning and denied three. The board denied one of them that we approved, so you approved four of these and denied four. We approved four conditional uses, and you affirmed that. We approved four final plats, and you affirmed that. We approved two preliminary plats, one was withdrawn, and you approved those two. And the withdrawal, of course, was withdrawn. And that is our summary. We are interested in the strategic planning process that's going on, and all for our help and participation in that as you deem a need. Thank you.
And before, board members may have some questions or comments. I do have one comment, and that is just to say thank you to you and the other P&amp;Z members that are in the audience. This is a volunteer job, and it is an extremely difficult one. Issues a lot of times are very emotionally charged. Y'all meet a lot of times well into the night, and I just want to say publicly that we very much appreciate the work that you do do. Are there any questions or comments? Alderman.
Chairman Herring, I'd like to say thank you as well, and we had a good meeting today with the comprehensive planning committee. We are slightly off schedule, just because we spent all day talking about significant findings. So we will be coming to the P&amp;Z, as I presented, within the short future of utilizing the expertise of that board to help us amend that process and finalize that document, so.
We're very interested in being a part of that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Of course, you know, but the audience may not know, our planning and zoning commission is made up of an appointee from each of the seven boards in the city. So each of you has a representative, and we do appreciate that appointment and serve the best we can.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Herring. All right, next we have the annual presentation for the administrative adjudicative officer, Jenny Turner.
Mr. Mayor Alderman, my name is Jenny Turner. I serve as your administrative hearing officer, and to my right is Bill Green, and he's our administrator. Mr. Green does a good job of scheduling all our hearings and processing our fines, and we appreciate all the work he does as a full-time employee. In two thousand and nine, the administrative division scheduled hearings for a hundred and thirty-six cases. Of those cases, about a third of those just came in and paid their fines, and that was, those were completed. We conducted eighteen hearings in two thousand and nine with police officers serving as prosecutors on false alarm cases, the animal control officers serving as prosecutors on the animal neglect cases, and code enforcement employees serving as prosecutors on the other code violations. In your packet, I think you have a graph of the kinds and the number of cases that we've handled this year. As you can see, more than half of our cases are trash away. So that kind of gives you an idea of what we're dealing with. So we would be glad to hear any questions you have about what we're doing or the kind of cases we're handling, if there's anything else.
Let me again say thank you. Not volunteer, but much appreciated. This is a somewhat novel program, as I understand it, in the state. So y'all are trailblazers, and I can say, in my time here, it's something I found to be exceedingly beneficial and something y'all do an excellent job with. Questions or comments from the members of the board?
Ms. Turner, very briefly, let me say that this has really lifted a lot of time from this board, because over the years, we've taken these property matters and other cases that have just come for the board that we had to sit and be the, and they're a fact and make the decision. So y'all are doing a great job with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. Our final public appearance of the evening is by Wayne Wilkerson, Bob Bruzek, and Chris Campney.
I think we've got Brian, Brian Templeton and Chris Campney.
Okay. And this is on the tree board.
Yes, sir. Good evening. We'll be brief. I'm Assistant Professor of Landscape Architecture, Chris Campney.
I'm Brian Templeton, I work for the Extension Service, also in the Department of Landscape Architecture.
What we're proposing is the formation of a tree advisory board for the city of Starville. The advisory board can be composed of area tree experts who will assist the city as needed on a voluntary basis. Duties will include assisting city employees on landscape, horticulture, and urban forestry practices, developing plant lists, assisting in grant writing, coordinating events and opportunities with the Mississippi Urban Forest Council, and promoting the overall tree health and urban forestry of the city of Starville. This should incur zero cost, and in fact, if we're able to successfully write grants, we may actually be able to bring some money in, but it would be in purely advisory capacity.
Questions or comments from the members of the board?
I've got a comment.
Alderman.
I'd like to thank Chris and Brian for being here. This was something I put forward, something we'll talk about later on tonight. But Alderman Corey has helped us secure a Mississippi Urban Forestry workshop this summer. Well, it's May sixth, I believe? May, first week of May. And I see this as a true opportunity to really help solidify, knowing that Ben Griffiths is working on the landscape ordinance, and there are significant issues associated with, or potential opportunities, there's probably a better way to say that, of opportunities through our landscape ordinance, through tree preservation and other types of issues that this board can help us with. There's a lot of knowledge in this area, considering the land-grant institution aspect, landscape architecture, a whole number of things, and so I'm encouraged to know that these people have come forward and offered their assistance from this, so thank you.
Any further questions, comments from the members of the board? Further questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen. All right, that concludes our public appearances, and we have three public...
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Thank you, Mayor. Item RZ ten dash zero one is a request by Mr. Carlos White for a zoning change from R one, single-family, and R three, multifamily, to C one, neighborhood commercial. The subject property is located at the southwestern corner of Hospital Road and High Wasey Drive in Ward Six, and will affect approximately five acres of land. The applicant has provided a request letter stating that he would like to rezone the property and market it for its highest and best use. The applicant has stated that the subject property's location, close to the hospital, would make it suitable for something related to the medical and health care industry. Under the property's current residential zonings, the northern R one portion would be allowed ten dwelling units, while the southern R three portion would be allowed twenty dwelling units for a total maximum gross density of approximately thirty dwelling units for the property. The R three zoning allows single-family structures, as well as duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. It is important to emphasize that changes in an area include much more than just zoning changes. The existing conditions of an area are equally important. Construction is now underway at the Octibahaw County Hospital for a new tower and parking garage, as well as extensive renovations... garage, as well as extensive renovations to patient room areas. Other sites in the area are currently undergoing site plan review, including a large new women's clinic at the northwestern corner of Jackson Street and Hospital Road. Permits have been issued for the construction of a multi-use path on the eastern portion of Hospital Road, and the western portion of Hospital Road is scheduled for resurfacing later this year. A major roadway design plan is currently underway for Reed Road to the west. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on March 9th, and several area residents appeared to voice their opposition to the rezoning request, and the approved P&amp;Z minutes have been included with your packet. The P&amp;Z voted unanimously to deny the request based on the belief that there had not been enough change in the area. Twenty-one property owners of record within 160 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request. A public hearing notice was published in the March 31st edition of the Starkville Daily News, and two placards were posted on the site concurrent with the notice. The Board of Aldermen's approval of the rezoning request would be based on changing conditions in the area.
Questions or comments from the members of the board for Mr. Griffiths? Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board?
So at the time of the planning and zoning meeting, the hospital was not... Had not started their construction?
We had not issued permits for that. It was approved, and we were waiting for... I think at the time, the bids had been... The bids had been... I believe the bids had just been awarded, but permits had not been sold and work had not begun underway. Same as on the pedestrian improvements, those were just issued this week.
And was that a factor in part of the determination is that that work had not started, so it could not be considered as a change?
The city attorney had recommended to the P&amp;Z, and tell me if I say this the wrong way, the city attorney had recommended to P&amp;Z that the changes had to have already occurred. They couldn't occur in the future. They had already been on the ground or occurred in the past. Is that...
That's correct.
Something to that effect. I believe we put that in the minutes to make sure, because I believe you requested the... I don't have it in front of me.
It's in the minutes.
The... Wanted to make sure that that was reflected in the minutes.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments?
I've got...
Alden Demis.
We've got a medical overlay existing right now on our future land use map, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And does that extend to this piece of property?
It... The overlay district boundary is actually the street that's adjacent to this property.
So that's Hiwasi and...
Hiwasi, south of Hospital Road. So this particular piece of property is not included in the overlay district. It is immediately adjacent to it.
Is the rest of that zone C1?
Believe all of it is. I believe everything within the hospital overlay is zone C1. I'd have to look to make sure. If there's something that's not, I'd be surprised. I believe all of that is C1.
You're talking to the south of Hiwasi? You say C1? You said everything is zone C1? Is that to the south of Hiwasi?
Along Hospital, along Hospital Road, the nursing home and the doctors and...
My question is, if you're... Is it, let's say, to the east of Hiwasi? And that's what you're talking about, all the... To the east of Hiwasi?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Are there any further questions or comments from the members of the board?
And Mr. White is here to address the board as well.
Okay. We'll now move to the public comment portion of the public hearing. And in keeping with standard practice for rezoning matters, the way we will proceed through this is first, any of the proponents wishing to speak, and this is a little different than the way we handle some of our more issue-oriented public hearings. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed change will have an allotted time of 15 minutes. Is there anyone other than Mr. White wishing to speak in favor of the proposed zoning change? So, Mr. White, you'll have 15 minutes to address the matter. Then, when you are done, anyone wishing to speak against will share the 15-minute allotted period of time. Do we have anyone wishing to speak against the proposed change? All right, I would ask while Mr. White is making his comments, if you could decide amongst yourselves how you'd like to allocate that 15 minutes. You can split it any way you'd like. You'll have a total block of 15 minutes for all of you to address it any way you'd like to do it. Mr. White?
Being pretty much said what we're asking to do, we're not trying to destroy anything. Actually, we felt like that this was the best use of the property. It would buffer the church, and it would also buffer the residential area behind the Carver Drive. All you C1 property has to have a 30-foot buffer on it. And we felt that this was the best thing for the neighborhood. And I have a longstanding with the neighborhood. My granddaddy developed that property. He gave the property to the hospital. So, I mean, we don't want to do anything that'll destroy any part of the neighborhood or whatever. But it is zoned R3 now, a big part of it. And either whether I develop it or if somebody else comes in, I sell it all, and somebody comes in and decides to build apartments on it, I just don't see that in that neighborhood. I don't see that's what it's for. I felt like my commercial was, and he was the best use for it. Hope y'all see it that way.
Thank you, Ms. White.
I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody has for it.
We'll do some questions at the end of the conference period. Thank you, Mr. White. All right, and to those wishing to speak against, do you need a little more time to decide how you'd like to allocate your time?
Can I go first?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I speak for also some of you in this room? I was out here when you asked.
Yes, yes, you can. So hold that thought for a second. You can come and speak for. And how much time's remaining?
Thirteen.
You have 13 minutes.
I'm a longtime resident of that area, living on Garrett Road and Hiwasi Drive, almost at the corner there. And I've seen that area change over the years, the hospitals grow, there's doctor's offices there. And my father was a builder, and I don't think any builder would, today rightly, build homes in there. They'd be like those homes that were built for the theater that was built later out there by Walmart. A builder could come in and try to sell the homes and get some relative, probably promote them. But I think it's just inappropriate for homes, particularly R1. R3, I don't know. But with the hospital growing, I think it's the best use of the land. The land's been empty for many years, and I'd like to see it develop.
And can you please state your name for the record?
Mike Okweze.
Thank you, Mr. Okweze. All right, now, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed zoning change before we move to those wishing to speak against? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? All right, now, anyone wishing to speak against, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Mr. Mayor and members of the board, my name is Buren Blankenship. I'm pastor of Trinity Presbyterian Church, which borders Mr. White's property. And the governing board of the church, called Decession, has asked Pink Studley and myself to speak in opposition to this zoning change. We are grateful that Trinity Church is largely surrounded by residential areas, and it is our opinion that the neighborhood is and has been stable. Hiwasi Drive forms a natural boundary between C1 and R1 zones on the south side of the Hospital Road. Hospital Road has two halves, two different characters and atmospheres, roughly marked by the traffic signal at Hiwasi Drive. The case locator map shows that no property in the area to the west of Hiwasi Road or Hiwasi Drive, no property there is zoned commercial at this time. We believe that substantial C1 property is available for development on the east side of the hospital. Changing the zoning of this property would not reflect the change in the neighborhood. Rezoning would be the catalyst to transform a peaceful residential area to a busy, high-traffic business district. Once the zoning is changed, the property does not necessarily become a medical facility. As you know, C1 allows 116 possible uses. And opening the door to all these possibilities is not in the best interest of Trinity Presbyterian or the citizens who call that area home. The neighborhood has not changed. We assert that the changes on the eastern end of Hospital Road do not justify rezoning the western portion. We also believe that this proposed rezoning is not compatible with the City of Starkville Comprehensive Plan, which is currently in place, adopted by Board of Aldermen. The plan states the following: Some commercial policies. One, that unplanned scattering of commercial land uses and the development of commercial strips should be discouraged because they lead to increased public cost. Another says designated commercial centers should possess identifiable physical boundaries in relation to residential land uses. Hiwasi Drive already provides this physical boundary. Another item was that overzoning for commercial land uses should be discouraged because of its potential for creating scattered and strip commercial land use patterns, as well as oversaturation of the market. So this rezoning request is out of accord with the Comprehensive Plan. The Mississippi Code relating to rezoning of property requires that, quote, "Those seeking the change must prove by clear and convincing evidence," end of quote, not only that, quote, "the character of the neighborhood has changed to such an extent that has to justify rezoning, but also that the public need exists for rezoning, and this proposal does not meet a public need." When the Comprehensive Plan was adopted, the Board of Aldermen embraced certain significant findings, and number seven of those findings states, "Too much land zoned commercial and multifamily and in inappropriate places." The public does not need this rezoning. As a pastor, I've visited many church members over the years in many different hospitals in five states. When I first learned of the pastoral position at Trinity Presbyterian, I noticed that the address was Hospital Road. And the picture that flashed in my mind was a church next to a hospital surrounded by fast food restaurants, outpatient facilities, and pharmacies. Interprised in this scene are formerly nice homes turned into shops for florists, medical aides, and medical record-keeping. The homeowners in many of these cities were forced to flee. Instead, Trinity Presbyterian is located in a peaceful, quiet neighborhood of well-maintained homes and yards. If you follow the Starkville Comprehensive Plan, the requirements of the Mississippi Code regarding rezoning, and the unanimous recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, you will preserve the character and value of this neighborhood. The members of Trinity Presbyterian ask that you do so. Mrs. Studley would like to speak.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Pink Studley. I'm a charter member of Trinity Presbyterian Church on Hospital Drive. More than 30 years ago, this congregation chose to build in this peaceful area, one that now seems threatened by the possibility of a zone change on our east boundary, a change to C1. At the time we built, the area was surrounded on three sides by woods and was across the street from well-established residences. During the past 30 years, the character of this area has been one of stability and peace. That character has not changed. However, if the zoning of the property under discussion is changed to C1, we could find ourselves next door to a convenience store, or self-service gas station, a flea market, or a liquor store. That would certainly destroy the quiet, the peace, and the restorative nature of the present environment, and it would surely have a negative effect on homeowners in the area. If a major goal of zoning in Starkville is to have planned, attractive, harmonious development, then we ask that you deny the request for rezoning this property as C1. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
There is eight minutes remaining for those wishing to speak in opposition.
It's all right with the board. We'd like to take about 30 seconds of that. Eight minutes. Okay. My name is David. Good evening to the board, mayor to the all. We're glad to be here. We are... My name is David McCoy. This is Brenda McCoy, my wife. We are the owners of the land that is directly south, at the very corner, at the furthest to the east of the property, of proposed property for change. We come, we stand before you, I sit before you, to affirm what was said by Pastor Blankenship and Ms. Studley. This is a quiet residential area, and it has been for some years, since we've been there, approximately 18 years. And we would not like to see it rezoned to C1. So I guess that succinctly puts our position. We are just vehemently against it. We've raised children there. It's a good community. And it's also that community that has a problem with the ditch. And if you can do something with that, we would be mighty proud of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seven minutes.
Mayor and board, I'm Angela Panel. I am the homeowner at 604 Hospital Road. We purchased our home in April of 2006. I just want the board to be aware of that five of the immediate homeowners in the area are all new homeowners since the fall of 2005. Our house, the two houses on either side of Hiwasi going north from the property in question are all new homeowners, as well as my next-door neighbor. That is a family home, which I think they bought out some of their siblings. But the six immediate neighbors right there are all new neighbors since the fall of 2005. And I think that should be taken into consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Six and a half. Approximately six and a half minutes left. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll move into questions and comments by the members of the board. Are there any questions or comments by the members of the board? Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move to our second public hearing of the evening, and it is the third public hearing on the adoption of an ordinance to require safety helmets for operators of bicycles and alternative vehicles within the city of Starkville. And Dr. Cosman, at some point since you have been a lead on this, the board may have some questions prior to the public comment portion. I want to introduce this matter this evening. And I guess it's a... The Healthy Hometown Committee had kind of a watershed moment last week when the actual Healthy Hometown application was submitted. It is a fine application. I think we'll have an excellent chance to win the award. I think this process, regardless of what happens with the award, has done exactly what we hoped it would do at the outset, and that is to provide an inventory of how we're promoting a healthier standard of living and quality of life in this community. One thing that we saw as it relates to this ordinance is this is a gap that we see, identified by the program. As we knew at the outset of the ordinance, we would see, we saw it as a barometer to judge what our overall efforts at promoting better health in this community, how we stood. And we saw that we stood quite well in promoting physical activity, particularly on and around our roadways with biking. We are indeed trendsetters. There wasn't a lot we had to do to meet the requests of the application in terms of emphasizing biking and physical activity, because we were already doing it. We saw a gap, though, in the second part of that, and that is recognizing it's a two-way street, that promoting public health, the exercise component of it is certainly a big part of it, but when you are actively promoting bicycles, sharing the road with vehicular traffic, there is potentially a downside, and you create a hazard. One thing we did not have that was a part of the checklist in the application is a helmet ordinance that promoted just that. What we've seen, and I imagine it is due to this competition, is all of the other trendsetters in promoting biking in their communities have taken up this ordinance or similar ordinance. One has already been passed in Ridgeland, and that is a comprehensive, applies to all ages, ordinance similar to this one. It's actually a little more punitive than the one you have here. There is no purchase of helmet option in lieu of paying a fine associated with that ordinance. Hernando is the second community that... Hernando is the second community that has passed a helmet ordinance, and theirs is an under-16 ordinance where ours originally started. And of course, there was a change hence, a third public hearing instead of a second public hearing, after I had a conversation with the police chief and his accident reconstructionist. And he said, "If you want to get at this issue, you're missing the population most affected by it because the head injuries on bicycles that we work are almost exclusively people over the age of 16." So, of course, we went back to the Healthy Hometown Committee and had a conversation about it, and then it was brought forward in that form because it makes sense if we're going to get at it, to get at where the policy issue is. Now, in the coming weeks, Tupelo is scheduled to take up a proposed bicycle helmet ordinance, and Madison is also proposed to take up bicycle helmet ordinance. Not only is this a trend that I expect you'll see in trend-setting communities that are actively encouraging people to share the road on bikes with vehicles, I don't think it's a far cry at all that some point in the not-too-distant future, you will see the state of Mississippi go where 20 states already have and adopt an ordinance. The state of Mississippi has already taken a proactive step in making it state law to have a buffer distance between cars and bikes. What we're seeing is a culture evolving, and it's a very good thing from a health and wellness standpoint where biking is more and more encouraged throughout the United States and throughout the state of Mississippi. And I do believe that eventually, just like it happened with motorcycles, you will see helmets required in state. Until then, I think it's up to the communities that are probably doing much more than a lot of other communities to promote biking in their communities, to take the lead and be proactive on the front end. Dr. Cosman?
Would you like to start off?
Yeah. Do you have any, I guess, any other introductory thoughts?
Actually, 22 states have statewide laws for helmet use. But you're right on my terms of where all the other communities in the state are right now, and it's a growing trend. I'm hearing about more and more communities every week considering these ordinance.
Questions, comments from the members of the board? Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board?
All right. Seeing none, we'll move to the public comment portion of this. And on ordinances, this is a bit different than a zoning matter. We'll still have 15 minutes per side, but we'll recognize a speaker for and a speaker against alternating until the 15 minutes for each side is exhausted for a maximum of three minutes apiece. Dr. Cosman, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. Good evening. Here we are again. Thank you for considering this ordinance. I think it's very important for safety and the health of this community. I don't think that anyone debates the physics of helmets. They save lives, they reduce the level of trauma, they are very proactive in terms of preventing injuries. My argument is that this is an issue of consistency. If we're going to promote that fourth through eighth graders ride or walk to school, that we have a lin lane, multi-use path, that we have complete streets, that we're encouraging people to get out and be active and to ride bicycles around this town, then by the same token, we have a responsibility to make that environment as safe as we can with traffic lights, stoplights, speed bumps, low speed limits in residential areas, and requiring bike helmets. Now, one of the counterarguments has been a libertarian approach suggesting that perhaps individuals should be in a position to make up their own mind, that should be a personal liberty as to whether or not to wear a helmet on a bicycle or other vehicle. And that's correct insofar as you talk about personal rights, but when you begin to talk about the economics, these are all shared. The NIH did a study that they published in 1998, and the average cost of a brain trauma, all costs including medical, indirect, lost wages, was over $2 million. Obviously, for an individual who's not insured, that's going to be shared by the entire community. And even if that individual is insured, there are usually limits to what will be paid for, and once again, the community will share those costs. So I would suggest that you look not only at the personal liberties issue, but also at how we've come together as a community, and we are now all responsible for each other. And that can be a good thing in the sense that we're all looking out for each other and trying to promote a healthier lifestyle because that's what it takes, is a community approach to many of these health issues, such as helmet safety, obesity, dropout rates, and educational attainment. Those all need to be approached, not on individual basis, but at a community level. So I would urge the board to consider passing this ordinance and making us one of the leaders in the state of Mississippi. Obviously, we can -- we have the option of going back and considering just under the age of 16, and I guess, in a pragmatic sense, it's better to have a ordinance that covers some than not necessarily all as opposed to not having an ordinance. I would urge you to consider the arguments that you hear tonight and make a decision to pass an ordinance that requires helmets for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cosman. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance? Yeah. It's someone's turn who'd like to speak against, first of all. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance? Please come forward, introduce yourself.
I'm Ben Weinberg. I'm a student at Mississippi State and resident of Starkville. You all have been speaking a lot about like the possible benefits of the ordinance being placed, which would be, there would be a lot less likelihood of people getting pin injuries in bike rides. But another thing I haven't really heard discussed is the racism this is going to bring with the youth of the police officers of Starkville. People riding around town with no helmets, if they're going to be stopped by a police officer, I mean, I think that would create like a serious amount of animosity maybe between the youth and the police officers because, quite honestly, people who ride around with no bike helmets aren't attacking anyone else who rides the property or, you know, any of their intrinsic rights that they're supposed to have. Another thing, I was just like, we're always talking about like, as if we're like going to set a trend. Well, I mean, it's not always the greatest thing for us to be setting trends of, you know, making mandates and dictates to the citizens that aren't really hurting anyone's, that, you know, aren't really doing anything to anyone. Other than that, oh, and also, I was wondering about kind of how it would be enforced in a way that, I mean, police officers aren't specifically gifted to be able to tell the difference between 16 or 17-year-old, even if they, y'all do choose to adopt the one for the 16 and younger. So, I mean, I think it would give police officers in town kind of carte blanche, a lot of authority to bother bike riders around town who, I mean, by my opinion, I'm a bike rider, I know most bike riders, and we're not terribly, we're pretty peaceful, you know, peaceful people around town, and it would be, you know, there'd be a lot of, there'd be a lot of animosity come between us and police officers in the city, in my opinion. But that's all I'm going to have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Dr. Emerson?
Good afternoon. My name is Jerry Emerson. I live at 122 Tuxford Road in Starkville, and I would like to urge the board to adopt this ordinance and to do so for all ages. I truly believe that it is in the public interest. I am passing around a helmet that I had on about nine months ago when a car pulled out in front of me. I hit the brakes and did a somersault over my bicycle. If you run your fingers over the front part there, that's right, Mr. Corey, that part right there would have been my skull if I had not had a helmet on. And the EMTs who were not called because I was not injured would have been mopping my brains up by the Humphrey Coliseum. I've been riding bicycles for about 25 years for long distance, and I will tell you, I know two things. One, if you ride a bike, you're going to fall sooner or later. And secondly, that helmets save lives. I've had two bike-car interactions in my life. Both of them involved my head hitting either the curb or the macadam, and in both of those accidents, I walked away with a couple of scratches. Without that, I am confident that I would have had a severe brain injury. I think it is important that we do what makes sense. We know that this protection works. We know that it is a very low-cost way, as Dr. Cosman indicated, to avoid some staggeringly high costs with regard to head injuries. People have asserted that this limits personal freedom. I do not believe it limits personal freedom. I think it extends personal freedom because when an individual rides without a helmet and subjects themselves to danger that is going to be very costly to deal with, they're basically saying, "I would like you to subsidize my accident, and we will do so." You know that. We're a compassionate world, and we're going to, if somebody doesn't have the money to take care of their brain injury, we are going to step in as a public and do so. And so when an individual asks us to subsidize their health care, they have an obligation to take very limited, low-cost ways of doing so. I think you also have to take into account the consequences from not wearing a helmet in an accident, the impact on emergency services, the demands that were caused there, the consequences that will be if there's another bicycle or car involved, the reaction from that individual, not to mention the heartbreak that will be associated with the family here. We routinely in our society accept restrictions on the part, as part of what we do to live in a civilized society. Seat belts, building codes, speed limits, laws against the recreational use of drugs are all, one minute, thank you.
A little less.
Are all restrictions that we accept, and we do so because of the good of the community. This is a good, sound public policy. We need to adopt this. I have a friend who is an emergency room nurse. We were discussing wearing bicycle helmets one time, and she said, "Oh, you know, Jerry, in my business, we've got a name for people who don't wear bicycle helmets." And I said, "Really? What's that?" She said, "Donors." I do not believe it is in the public interest for us to take actions that will not restrict that kind of situation from occurring. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance?
I'm not for nor against the bicycle ordinance. Chris Taylor, Wall Street, in the Von Wall. But we've got to look at what Mississippi State has done with bicycle for the students getting around. We're always talking about the relationship with the campus, and I think they donated hundreds of bikes for the students to ride around. Now, do they require helmets for those students to grab their bikes and go? Just something to think about. I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Yes, ma'am.
I'm on just the park right here. I drove an hour and a half to come over here and speak to y'all tonight because I live, I'm Nancy Clark, by the way, and I'm from Greenwood. And we're getting ready, we met with our, I met with our mayor yesterday, and we're getting ready to start our proposal for a bike helmet program. No, Jody did not have, this is my daughter, Jody, she's 28 years old, and no, her brain injury was not caused by a bicycle. It was caused by an automobile accident. But does it matter if a brain injury that takes a vibrant 22-year-old college student with her whole life ahead of her, from being that to being wheelchair-bound, Jody cannot talk and she cannot walk? And I know there's been a lot of complaints about, why do I have to wear a helmet? And the man who was up here talking about what it costs, I can tell you from experience, it costs, so far, ours has cost over $1,250,000. And insurance is paid for every bit of that. Bank or where she was still on my insurance. Now, they showed a bicycle helmet that's for a bicycle. This one is called an All Sports. So if you bike bicyclists also are out there on skateboards, et cetera, that's one for that. It's probably not the prettiest thing in the world, but I've got a better one for you. This is the helmet that Jody wore for six months after her accident. You think those are ugly? Take a gander at this thing. Why did Jody have to wear this rubber helmet? Because in her, when she suffered her traumatic brain injury, they had to remove a portion of her skull right here, that big round. She weren't that vain. If you can see right here, that's part of the scar that's left where they put her bone flap back in, it didn't completely fuse. So until they put that bone flap in six months later, there was nothing covering her brain with this rubber helmet when she was out of bed. It doesn't impinge on your rights. It saves your life. And maybe the young man was speaking against it in a way, but I think he gave one of the best fors it for y'all and decide if you end at 16 or you go up. And again, I don't think anybody wants a brain injury. I think the other helmet showed the difference between what you can be and what you may be. I looked around here, and Jody was the same age of a lot of the young people in here. She was an elementary major at the other school up the road at Ole Miss. She was a five U. She changed at the last minute with speech pathology. It's two months from her next, her second trip to Costa Rica for her semester of, summer of Spanish. We won't meet those goals, but we have other goals today. And the other goals are trying to educate people in how horrible a brain injury is, whether it's from a fall or a bicycle accident or a car accident. A brain injury is a brain injury. If you go out and play touch football without a helmet and you get a concussion, that's a brain injury. Lee is our executive director of the Mississippi Brain Injury Association. I'm on the board of directors, and we're here tonight to plead to help prevent these brain injuries. Lee has the statistics. I'm just the mama. And I can tell you, and if anybody has any questions for me, I'll be more than glad to answer them, and I'll give you a kind of a hint at what your life is like with a brain injury. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance?
Hi, I'm Anne Welch. I'm a student at Mississippi State and also am a everyday bike rider. Meet the class every day. As the ordinance stands right now, I'm obviously not in support of it. I would just like to go ahead and put it out there that I feel that if it would, the age limit was lowered back down to 16, I, as well as a lot of other college students, would be in support of the bicycle helmet ordinance. We realize that wearing helmets for new children when their brains are still developing and they're not old enough to make mature legally adult decisions, that their health should be protected. However, in my discussions with many of my student friends, I've seen that the general feelings are that if the helmet ordinance is passed, it might go generally ignored by the majority of the student population that already rides bikes every day. However, I feel that the helmet ordinance is passed, a lot of potential bikers might be deterred because of the insufficiencies of having to wear a helmet all the way to campus but not while you're on campus, and, you know, just kind of a hassle for a beginning Like, I understand that it's really important for our city to strive forward with the healthy, strive for the Healthy Community Award. However, I personally feel that if we get this award, and however, in the process, we decrease the amount of bicyclers in our town, that the award was kind of in vain. That by decreasing the number of potential cyclists after we've already put so much work into getting students to, and community members to start cycling, then, you know, our, the city's health would end up detrimental, or detriment instead of health.
Thank you.
How much time does each side have?
How much time is each side?
Okay. There are four minutes remaining for those wishing to speak. Four and 11 minutes for those wishing to speak against. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance?
One mayor.
Hold on. Hold on one second. Let's let Mr. Turner speak.
Good evening to the mayor and board. We had a 26-year-old on a motorcycle to lose control here at the street. Michael Hunt, pronounced dead on the road. 26-years-old, gone. These school buses have a hard time when children die in front of the bus, and they have to jam on brakes. It makes it hard for a sanitation truck to jam on brakes because someone have died in front of the truck. Some kids don't mind playing with their life, but you injure people that have to try to dodge you. So if we, you common sense, we can help one another. But if we don't, we will make Michael Hunt's job harder.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone wishing to speak in favor... Or, excuse me, against the proposed ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak against?
I'm Rita Usher, and I live in Ward Three. I don't know if I'm speaking for or against. I am a biker. I do... I don't do long distance. I do errands around town, so I am riding the city roads. I do appreciate the changes that have come about, and I'm hoping for some more. I also do ride... Wear a helmet. I am concerned, though, about how this will be enforced. If I'm a mother, and I've done my very best. I have purchased a helmet. I have warned my child when he walks out the door. I have watched him ride away from my house wearing a helmet. And he goes to a friend's house, gets off the bike, gets back on the bike, and forgets or decides not to wear the helmet. How will you enforce that? Are you going to ask me for that money, that fee, when I've done my very best to meet the law's requirements? Are you going to take the fee from a child who is underage, doesn't even vote? How is that gonna be enforced? I'm concerned about that. My son, who is here with me, proposed a suggestion to me just while we were standing over there. One suggestion would be, could we have an ordinance where people are riding, wearing helmets when they are outside of their neighborhoods? They're doing long distance. They're on busy roads. But when they're in their neighborhoods, children riding from one house to the another or just, you know, going short distances in your own neighborhood, that there would be some kind of exemption that would decrease the reason... The need to come after children who happen to be out on the road and forget to wear the helmet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Ms. Jenkins?
Yes, mayor. Y'all just take one of each and pass it on now. I'm Lee Jenkins. I'm director of the Brain Injury Association of Mississippi. And of course, I am here in favor of the ordinance. I'm not gonna take all the time because I want as many people that are in favor to speak as possible. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go over statistics. First of all, I'd like to tell you that Mississippi is number three in the country in numbers of brain injuries already. We were number one until we passed the seatbelt law. So we've gone from one to three because we passed the seatbelt law. People didn't wear seatbelts until we made them wear them. It just doesn't happen. It's gonna be the same way with helmets. More kids between 5 and 14 go to the hospital because of bike-related accidents than any other kind. Each year, 567,000 people go to the emergency rooms because of bike accidents. 350 of those injured are children under 15. Of those children, about 130,000 sustained brain injuries, and of those, 900 die each year. I just don't think there's a whole lot more that you have to say. You know, if we lose one child, that's too many. It's something that we can do to prevent it. It's prevention. It is being proactive. I am a bulldog. Let me say that. I went to Mississippi State. I've got two daughters here now, and I'll have another one in about 15 years here. But, you know, I've always thought of the city of Starkville and our school as being proactive and, you know, just very intelligent. This is an intelligent choice for us to make. It's an intelligent choice that you make for your children especially because they aren't old enough to decide for themselves. And, you know, I'm gonna cut it off at that. But I'd like to say, you know, if looking at someone with a brain injury isn't enough, I just don't know what is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and board, thank you for having me. I'm Mike Allen. This is... I really appreciate the third public hearing here. And I think there is no doubt... I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that helmets are good. But there is doubt in my mind that the government should force private, free, American citizens to wear them, especially adults. I think it's a slippery slope when government starts telling people what they can and can't do on issues that don't affect other people. So whether if I wear a helmet or not... And I do wear a helmet. It doesn't affect anybody else other than if we're all sharing health care costs. And that's what's a problem with that bill as well, I feel. But it's a slippery slope to start legislating freedom issues like this. What we say next, that obesity is a problem, so we can only eat 3,000 calories a day or 2,000 calories, and then it's illegal to eat anything else? I mean, at some point, we've gotta say enough's enough and let people make their own decisions, whether they're good or bad, as long as they don't impact others. So as I mentioned in my letter to the editor, you are our representatives, not our parents, and I say that respectfully. But I really don't... As a grown man, I don't want to be told that I have to wear a helmet. I want to choose to do it myself. And I do choose to do it, and I make my kids do it. But it's a freedom issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Stephen McCorkle, and on July 29, 2007, actually just barely outside Starkville city limits, I was in a motor vehicle bike accident. I was on the bike, and I was doing everything right. I was riding with a partner. I had reflectors, appropriate clothing, and a helmet. And I wish I'd brought my laptop in to show you the pictures. There's not much left at the left side of my helmet. It disintegrated upon impact, which is what it's designed to do. Even with that, and supposedly shadow-proof sunglasses required... Do you have some copies of pictures that y'all can pass through? Required plastic surgery. Six months after my accident, I did not close my eye for six months. I still cannot fully close my left eye today. That will always be an issue. But because of my helmet, I'm alive. I'm standing here before you... Or sitting here before you today discussing this. When I got to the hospital, they took me to OCH. I was diagnosed broken back, lacerated spleen, broken pelvis, broken hips. I was not diagnosed with a concussion. I had no brain injury, no head injury of any kind, other than superficial damage. To me, a bike helmet is as integral a part of a bicycle ride as a seatbelt is to a motor vehicle ride. You know, I was extremely disappointed to even be here that there was the opposition to this that there is. You know, we need to take a stand on this issue and state that we need to protect our children, each other, and unfortunately, those souls that are... I don't know anywhere to say this. I don't want to offend anybody, but too ignorant to wear a helmet on their own. And this is a very serious issue that is extremely disappointing to me, is even debatable. I think we need to take a stand on this and make bicycle helmets the law to protect each other and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that exhausts the time speaking in favor. How much do we have remaining against? Got six minutes against.
Mayor, Ward Alderman. I'm not gonna talk long. I'm not gonna argue that it's not intelligent to wear a helmet or that they work as evidence here today. But my question is, is it your responsibility to mandate us to wear one? Like Mr. Allen proposed, it's a slippery slope there, and you don't... It's hard to discern when to stop. Also, wanted to bring about the idea that it would be smarter to educate students and residents of Starkville, you know, with programs and statistics. But I think it's a dangerous thing when you start to mandate things such as this on students and residents in general.
Thank you. Oh, could you state your name for the record?
Joe Greenlee, student.
Thank you, Mr. Greenlee. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance?
Mayor, Ward Alderman. My name's Stephen Covington, and I am also a student at Mississippi State University. And two of the main things that I would like to address about this helmet issue is President Kenham has been... One of his main things he wants to do is get more students to Mississippi State University, which he's been doing year after year after year so far. And it's only... It looks like, you know, next year's gonna be another wreckage-setting amount of freshmen coming in. And another thing that I'd like to commend y'all on, that y'all have always... Y'all have kind of started this green initiative. And with more people coming in each... With more students coming in each year, this is the main people that's gonna affect. And I think actually, it would have a reverse effect on the green initiative that y'all are trying to start with people less... I mean, I know it might... Since y'all are adults, and it might sound... Well, actually, I'm an adult, too, but... It might sound stupid to y'all, but like... Some people aren't just gonna ride a bike anymore if they gotta wear a helmet because they think it looks stupid. And, I mean, I know it saves lives, and there's no arguing that at all. But if you want more people... This is not helping, like, people being healthier, starvel. People who want to ride bikes is gonna hurt it because the majority of the people that ride bikes are students at Mississippi State University. And with more students coming in, that's gonna be less... You're gonna see year after year, from what I gather from talking to students, less people riding bikes each year, which means there's gonna be more people riding vehicles, which there's gonna be more vehicular accidents with each other. And with more people riding vehicles, that's gonna just tear up the roads, and that's gonna just use... I mean, if you are talking about saving money, there's just gonna be more money coming from somewhere else. And another thing is that, I mean, it's a public liberty to be able to do this and personal freedom. And one of the main things I've... That this is respectful, but it seems like to me that... From what I've heard, that this is something about winning an award, not really what the people want. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. We've got time for about one more speaker against. Anyone else wishing to speak against?
Let me just say something really quick. Mayor and board, I don't really know if I'm for or against. My name is Lee Thorne, student at Mississippi State. I just wanna make sure that we understand how this is gonna be implemented. Eighteen... Over 18,000, almost 20,000 students attend Mississippi State University, which is about 50% of city of Starkville, around there, if my percentages are correct. I don't see many police officers traveling into neighborhoods among Starkville looking for people not wearing helmets. But I do see them driving along university looking for students not wearing helmets or anybody. And I don't think we're here today to argue if helmets are good, and I believe they are. And, you know, if this passes, I think it will do great things because I think students will start wearing... Will have to wear helmets or at least $25 fine, from what I've heard. But I just wanna make sure that we think about who will be the main people getting tickets, who that will affect. And I think that will mostly be students. And so maybe if we can figure out the best way to implement it, and that's all really I had. Nothing for or against, but just to think about, so.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne. All right, that concludes our public comment portion of the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board? Any questions or comments from the members of the board? Alderman, go on.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a part of the Capitol Hometown Committee myself. And I hear everyone talking about it's my personal liberty. It's my rights. We have a smoking order, you buy, buy. Seatbelt order, you buy, buy. And what about your life? Your child's life? Your child see you wearing helmets, they'll be more freely to wear one without mom and dad wear one. I got to wear one. And we talk about... What about the safety of your child? Talking about out in the street, most things happen to kids right at home. Right at home. They don't be in the neighborhood. They haven't read no far from the house. And accidents and incidences happen so much. But those incidents gonna soon turn into an accident if they can keep having them. And I would be more concerned, not only about my children's life, what about my life? Your life taken, how can you provide for your child if your life taken in an accident? Brain damage. That's a prime example right over there of what we're looking at. What can you do for your child? What can you do for yourself? And if someone said it's our responsibility to be concerned about the welfare and the well-being of everyone in Starkville, that's why we elected. That's our responsibility. That is our responsibility. We're worried about you. We're concerned about you. And I know I'm concerned about... Because I have 11 kids, and I'm concerned about them. And I'm concerned about myself. If I get hurt, why can't I provide for my kids? I can't provide. So all against, I hope you take it into consideration. It ain't just about you. It's about the city of Starkville.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the next public hearing, which is the second public hearing on repealing and replacing the stormwater...
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
committee had a final... Or a meeting where we took those public comments, and we took the stormwater ordinance as we had it then. And we had our city attorney, our city engineer, and everyone involved look at those changes and make any changes that we felt we needed in the ordinance. Basically, we've taken the ordinance that we've had for the past four years. We've added a definition... A definition section and index that defines some of the wording in our ordinance. We've added a runoff coefficient table that kind of sets some standards of runoff coefficients. So everybody's kind of working on a level playing field as far as what formula and numbers they're using in their calculations. The applicability section, anything one acre or below will be exempt from this ordinance, will not have to comply. Anything one to two acres with greater... With 50% or greater impervious surface will be subject to... So anything one to two acres with less than 50% impervious will be exempt from the ordinance. So basically, anything over two acres is subject to the ordinance. We have... In the previous ordinance, we were containing a 25-year storm event. We have reduced that to a two- and a 10-year storm event of the water that we're containing. We have changed up the penalty phase. In the old ordinance, it was actually a criminal act, and you could be in prison. We've changed that penalty phase and taken out the criminal aspect, but we've increased the punitive damages, the fines. We've also added a clause that... We've also added a clause that more or less compels that if a, if someone is found out of compliance on the stormwater on an existing structure, they will be notified, and they have ninety days to bring their structure into compliance. If they do not comply, the City of Starkville will have the right to go fix what's wrong, and we will charge that person the cost plus a fine to bring it in compliance. We also created a stormwater hearing and appeals board. This board would consist of three citizens that would hear if anybody felt that they should not comply for any reason to the stormwater ordinance, they would take their complaint in front of this committee, and that committee would make that determination whether they should comply with the stormwater ordinance. Also, if you were found in noncompliance with any, with anything in the stormwater ordinance, you could appeal that to the stormwater hearing and appeals board. And Alderman Dumas and Sistrunk may want to add anything?
Comments from Alderman Dumas and Sistrunk?
I'd like to add that while we reduce the size of the event that's going to be handled under the stormwater ordinance, we will actually be handling more events than we were previously. I'd also like to say that part of what we were trying to do was broaden our thinking away from simply retention and detention pines and allow some other methods of mitigating stormwater. We're trying to give as much flexibility as we can while setting some minimum standards with this.
Alderman Dumas?
I don't have anything to add to that.
Well, I'd just say, I've said it again, but I don't think y'all can be commended enough for going through this process, and I know probably everybody that was a part of the committee was dissatisfied with a little something that was in there, but eyewitness, walking up and down the hall, the difficult work y'all did over months back there in that conference room, and I just think y'all did an excellent job.
Any questions or comments from the members of the board? Any questions or comments from the members of the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we'll keep this, it's the same practice that we just did. Anyone wishing to speak in favor may be recognized for a maximum of three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? All right, is there anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay. I guess those average out.
If you're not for or against?
You can, absolutely.
My name's John Gaskin, I'm from Ward Three, and I think everybody in Starkville who's even looked at stormwater ordinance realizes it needed a lot of changes in it. You know, my only concern, and I think it definitely needs to change, when you start talking about one acre or less, and this may be more of a question, and I don't know if y'all answer questions or not, but my concern would be if somebody has like a thirteen, fifteen, fifty-acre parcel of land, and they just sell lots off, I don't know if you can sell one-acre lots in Starkville without having it classified as a neighborhood or not, if you just had streetfront property and sold some of it. You know, I would have some concerns to people downstream. Our neighborhood, we own a part of a ditch on Academy Road, which part of the land on that is now going to be developed. And, you know, when you start looking at up to, you know, eight houses per acre on thirteen acres, the effect that that would have on it. You know, my concern is just to make sure that we're protected, that all neighborhoods are protected. I know Alderman Parker's neighborhood is a new neighborhood, and the developer did everything required under the ordinance at the time, and that there are people who live down in the cul-de-sac there, whose water, it's a friend of mine, who the water sometimes, when it rains a lot, comes up to the door of the car. And I know when you read in here about five-year and ten-year floodplains versus a hundred years, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert at all, and I don't pretend to be, but you know, I just want to make sure that we've had an ordinance, homes built into that while having ordinances, and still have problems. The last thing I'm going to say is the appeals board. My only question is, how lenient would it be for the appeals board to give variances? You know, sometimes when you read it, it looks like, okay, this is what the ordinance says, but here at the end, this, this, and this, and this was disqualified, or you can get a variance. I do have a concern about how easy it is to get a variance from the ordinance, because if it's too easy, why have the ordinance, though? And I'm not saying that's the case, I'm not making assumptions, but I'm just asking those questions as concerns to y'all, so. But thank you for the work, because it definitely needed some revisions, especially when it argued with itself between the second and third paragraph. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskin. Is there any other comments of any nature on the ordinance? All right, seeing none, we'll hear questions, comments from the members of the board.
I'd like to address the variance part of this. We tried to give some very specific criteria about when you could ask for a variance. One of the things that we note in here is that the granting of a variance will not increase in increased stormwater runoff greater than ten percent. So we're trying to minimize what can happen with a variance. It's a very technical issue. As somebody who knew very little about stormwater six months ago, and now know more than I want to, it's a very technical issue, and we tried very hard to make the variance process something that protected people downstream as well as the property owner.
To answer your quest about, or your question about platted neighborhoods and selling individual lots, the policy right now is to develop a neighborhood or to do anything to that effect, you have to, there's a preliminary plat procedure that you have to go through to get those lots platted, and that is the stage at which you would be subject to the stormwater ordinance. It wouldn't be the size of your individual lot in the neighborhood, but if it's a platted neighborhood, it wouldn't matter if the lots were three acres, then if you're over two acres overall, then you're subject to the ordinance.
Further questions or comments by the members of the board? Any further questions or comments by the members of the board? All right, seeing none, that'll conclude the last public hearing, and without objection, I think it's time for recess.
I have one more.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, that's the second time I've done that. All right, final public hearing is the first public hearing on the adoption of a historic preservation ordinance. Alderman Corry?
Okay, sure. As the board may recall, we formed a historic preservation committee to look into this issue. It's been brought up before the city before. I learned a little bit of the history of it myself, being on this committee from some of the members therein, that it had been brought up back when Mac Rutledge was mayor, and that it's been brought up before. It got brought up in 2007, was discussed some, and then tabled without being brought back before the board. So I just thought it would be a good idea to just kind of bring this issue back, see kind of what this board's feelings were on this, and you know, what kind of public comment there was, and then go from there. The way this ordinance is structured is actually not defining any historic districts in the city. This is an ordinance to create a historic preservation commission, similar to planning and zoning commission that we already have. That commission would then look at areas in town that would meet the qualifications for historic area of town, and attempt to draw up those districts, and then present those to the board for our approval. Thereafter, it would then be responsible for issues that might come up within those districts, such as requests for a certificate of appropriateness for certain changes within the district itself. So I'm on this committee along with Alderman Dumas and Alderman Carver, and if they have any comments, I'd certainly be willing.
I'd like to add to that, that, you know, we're going through the comprehensive planning, or the amendment of the comprehensive plan, and one of the significant findings of that from the 2005 adoption was that it was deemed at that time that a historic preservation ordinance needed to be adopted. And I know it was tabled through the last administration, but I think even in 2005, we see the significance of this type of ordinance. I think there's been considerable change in some of the neighborhoods that meet the requirements of the historic preservation ordinance, and I think all of us know where those are, that probably were a detriment, or the development that has occurred since recently has definitely been a detriment to the community context at large. So I very much am in favor of this, and I do appreciate Alderman Corry's work on this and putting this forward, and I think the people, and I thank the folks on the committee as well, because it's, we're fortunate here, even, again, one of the comprehensive planning committee, our comprehensive plan's significant findings was utilize the resources that we have at the university. And I think looking at this committee and realizing that we have people from the state historic preservation office all the way through that are able to put their input on this, not from a statewide level, but from a local level, it's very helpful to the process, so.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board?
Just a quick comment before we open up the public comments. Since this is our first hearing, I do intend to take any questions, comments, complaints, et cetera, about this ordinance back to our committee that I plan to have meet next week, so that we can discuss those before bringing this back before our second public hearing.
Any further questions or comments from the board?
So who decides the area? Who decides the area?
It actually discusses that in the ordinance. Let's see, page nine, it says the commission's recommendations to the city for the designation of historic districts shall be accompanied by a map, verbal boundary, written statement, and then it has some language in there that talks about, based on the Mississippi Department of Archives and History, what kind of constitutes both either a historic district or landmark, which is another aspect of this ordinance.
So if they decided?
Yes.
The commission decides?
Well, the commission would discuss it and decide, but it would be non-binding, similar to planning and zoning. It would come before the Board of Alderman for final.
So if they decided on an area, would that be inclusive of, say, every individual home in that area? Would automatically fall?
Any described, any within the area that is described, yes. I mean, within the map that is provided.
So those homeowners wouldn't really have a, I mean, they would fall, they don't get a choice whether they're in or out? They're in the?
Well, that was one of the issues that was discussed when this came up before, and that was the issue of an opt-in or opt-out clause for it. Once the district is established, it would, of course, transfer with the deed. So the real question was then whether or not the initial homeowners would have that option of opting in or opting out, and that's, I guess, one of the issues I can certainly bring back to the committee.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move into the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance may do so by coming forward and introducing yourself for a maximum of three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak against? Anyone wishing to comment generally? Okay, seeing no comment, any further comments from the board?
I think we'll recess.
Okay, without objection, we'll recess. Any objection? Standing, recess. And we're now into board business. The first matter before, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Alderman Dumas has a comment that he would like to make.
I failed to mention during the, or the board comments, and I see Thomas Sellers here. I want to personally thank the Student Association. This is the second year of the big event, is that correct? And this is a community event, or this is a program that the Student Association started last year in which the whole purpose, the whole premise is to pay thanks to the community in which the university is in, and I think it's a fantastic program. And Friday, we had sixty students that came to our Parks and Recs program and worked in every park but the one in my ward, and I might have to talk to Matthew about that. But I do appreciate everything. It made a huge impact. They did everything from raking and painting and picking up trash, and I can't speak for the community at large, but I know several of them worked with community, with businesses, and several people through the community. So I commend you for the effort, it was great, and it really made an impact to the city, so thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to briefly echo that. Everything he said was right on the money, and you did a great job doing a really good thing. I guess as somebody who has walked in your shoes before, I am glad to see that the leadership of the Student Association keeps on getting better. Thanks so much.
It had a long way to go, Tom. I'm kidding, man, I'm kidding.
No, no, it's on point. The first matter of board business before you is the consideration of the formation of an infrastructure committee. And this is a general board matter that came from our strategic planning retreat. We had a discussion on it, I guess it's been about six weeks ago, and the board directive was to go back and draft a, an outline of what that committee would do and be comprised of, and you have that in your packet this evening.
Discussion.
I guess infrastructure is, and I see it here, and I mean, it's all infrastructure, utilities, roadways, and I see some overlap, obviously, and I know Alderman Perkins had some concerns about the transportation committee and how those two would work together, but I guess in the years past, that's how, I mean, all infrastructure would basically come through this before we come to the board.
Discussion by the members of the board. Alderman Carver?
Often with this committee, report to the Board of Alderman and their findings, and?
I think it calls for quarterly at least. I may be wrong on that, somebody check me, I'm trying to get to it.
Lots of meetings, I don't know how often they, and they report quarterly.
And of course, could always report more if there was something going on.
Mr. Mayor, I think this would be a good measure to adopt, and what happens, as to the gentleman's question is, what happens, the chairman will bring a report back to the board, and he'll ensure that the matter, matters are placed on the agenda, and he'll just give a standing committee report. So I think it's a good idea. Does anyone have any suggestion as to the names? I could make the motion, or someone knows who the membership be. I think it's a good idea, go ahead and proceed with the motion pursuant to the document they have at the table. So I'm ready to support it, we don't want all the motion on it.
Alderman Corry?
I'll just say that Alderman Perkins, you had an opportunity to serve on this committee before, and so I would defer to your judgment on that one.
Of course, I see on the agenda coming up, we've got the infrastructure and the budget committee, and I've served on both in years past, and just a toss-up, I like watching the city's money, so. If it pleased the board, I would prefer, if I had a chance, but both are important, I don't want to minimize, but I think at this time, I would like to serve on the budget committee, if it meets the will of the board. But I don't want to designate which members who should serve. If y'all want to give me some idea, and I can make the motion, but we definitely, it's a very important committee, and all infrastructure matters come through it. We have three members on this board, with the mayor and the chief administrative officer as the ex-official member. So any suggestions from board members, so we can appoint this committee as to who wants to serve? Anybody who wants to serve on this committee?
I'll serve on this committee.
I'll serve.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of establishing the infrastructure committee as a standing committee with the membership and structure as outlined in the Mission and Purpose Document, appointing Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Dumas, and Alderman Carver to said committee, and that this committee can designate this on chairperson, and that the mayor and chief administrative officer will serve as ex-official, non-voting members.
All right, Alderman Perkins has moved the approval of the establishment of an infrastructure committee as a standing committee with the membership and structure as outlined in the Mission and Purpose Document, and appointing Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Carver, and Alderman Dumas to said committee, with the committee to designate its own chair and the mayor and CAO to serve as ex officios on the committee. Is that your motion?
Yes, ex officios, non-voting members, yes, sir.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman, Corey Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, seeing none, all who's in favor, please signify by saying aye. All who's opposed, please signify by saying nay, that's your passage. Next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the formation of a Budget Committee and making appointments there too. Alderman Sistrunk.
This is a committee that would be similar to the Infrastructure Committee, it, it was a committee in the past. Last year, we did the budget as a committee of the whole, since we had so many new members of the board. This year, it would probably be much more efficient if we were able to have a subcommittee open, of course, to anyone on the board attending in addition to the subcommittee. It would be a little different maybe from budget committees in the past in that among the goals are not only to link the city's annual budget to their planning process, but also to present budget data to the public in a widely accessible and readable format, in addition to, of course, the presentation that's required by state statute, and then also to review monthly our performance, our financial performance against our budgeted goals, so I think that would keep us on track perhaps a little better with, with spending our, our monies, which Alderman Perkins likes to watch over for us, so. The committee would meet as often as necessary during the annual budget performance, it would meet monthly after that to, to do that financial review and to look at budget amendments if any were required. Alderman Perkins has expressed an interest in being on the committee, I, I too would like to be on the committee. And I, I would recommend Alderman Parker as, as another person for the committee.
Do you have a motion?
I do, I move approval of establishing the Budget Committee as a standing committee with the membership and structure as outlined in the Mission and Purpose Document, and appointing Alderman Eric Parker, Alderman Roy Perkins, and Alderman Sandra Sistrunk to said committee.
Alderman Sistrunk has moved approval of the establishment of the Budget Committee as a standing committee with the membership and structure as outlined in the Mission and Purpose Document, and appointing Alderman Perkins, Alderman Parker, and Alderman Sistrunk to said committee. Alderman Sistrunk, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Perkins, Alderman Sistrunk, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, thank you.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, seeing none, all who's in favor, please signify by saying aye. All who's opposed, please signify by saying nay, that's clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the approval of an ordinance requiring safety helmets for operators of bicycles and alternative vehicles within the city of Starkville and associated administrative hearing fine schedule. And I guess I'll speak just a little bit more on, on this one, it, it is one I, I feel strongly about, and I think, I think the discussion this evening was, was good, all, all the way around. As, as I gauge some of the concerns, the, the strongest one seems to be a, a personal liberty concern. And, and as this is an issue that's been raised throughout the public hearings on it, it, it's one I've given a lot of thought to, and my analysis of it is that city streets are one of the most fundamental things that, that a city provides. Of course, they provide all sorts of, of benefits, transportation, the facilitation of commerce, and, and things that are essential to the life of a city. The, the concept of streets, of course, has evolved a, a great deal over time and probably will continue to evolve. And as that concept has evolved, regulations have evolved as well. Of course, there, there was time when there were dirt paths, people traveled on horses, covered wagons, and that evolved to gravel roads, eventually to blacktop, advances in vehicular technology made travel much more convenient, but also led to the need for regulation. Things like speed limits, things like safety belts became required so that the quality of life improvement associated with good city streets also extended to the protection of the people that use those streets. We are in the midst of a, a new era in this community. I think it's very timely that, that we're having this discussion, because tomorrow, we will be breaking ground on one of the most significant bike improvement projects the city has taken on to date in the Hospital Road Reed Road pedestrian and bike path, parks of which will be made available for biking as a purpose. I anticipate we're going to have much more of that, we are still working actively on the Lynn Lane Bike Path Project. This is something I think the vast majority, if, if not a near consensus in this community, would agree is a good thing. Promoting a higher quality of life and using our streets in a more complete manner that, that actually does promote public health. With that comes a new safety issue. There is some hazard associated with encouraging bicyclers to share the road with vehicles. Certainly, there's a lot of benefit that we want to promote, but I, I, I think we are wise to consider, as other communities that, that are setting the trend on, on this as well, are now considering the, the safety repercussions. And what we know is that nearly ninety percent of all head injuries that, that occur in bicycle accidents are preventable with a helmet. I think as we make the upgrades and what a street is in this city evolves, there, there is a safety accommodation that comes with it, and I think that's where we are now. Discussion from the board. Alderman Vaughn.
Like you said, with the bike lanes coming and sidewalks, our kids are going to be out. But one thing I want the board to keep in mind, what's most important? The public keep in mind, what's most important? A ticket, a helmet, or life? What's important? A ticket, a helmet, or life? By me saying that, Mr. Mayor, I move, I move the approval of that all this requiring safety helmets for the operator of bicycle and alternat, alternative vehicle within the city of Starkville and associated administrative hearing and fine schedule.
Alderman Vaughn has made a motion to approve of an ordinance to require protective safety helmets for all users of bicycles and alternative transportation devices as defined in the ordinance operating on public rights of way, roadways, and public bike paths associated with administrative, fine, the administrative fine schedule resolution. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Dumas. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Discussion.
I've got something I'd like to say, I've, you have something?
Y'all both came at the same time, y'all picked it.
I'll second it.
Alderman Parker.
Well, I, I voiced my concerns at, at two previous public hearings, and, and I understand the safety aspect, I understand the, that helmets are a good thing, and, and my kids wear helmets, but, but when you weigh that with, with the fact that government involvement in mandating certain requirements such as that, I, I'm just, the overall response that I've gotten from my ward, and I, I can't speak for the other cities that have passed the ordinances and, and the reasons that they passed those ordinances, I can speak for my ward, of course, where I've gotten response, and the overwhelming response has, has been, you know, against the ordinance because of the, the government intervention in, in mandating it. That's my personal belief as well, and I would, I also think it's, it's far-reaching in that it goes toward so many things other than bicycles, in, in tricycles and big wheels, and just so many other things that I, I think it's far-reaching in that aspect of it as well, and I would encourage everybody to think about, I think sometimes we take the issuance and, and I think we take ordinance as lightly in some cases in that, you know, this ordinance, once it's, if it's, if it's adopted, will be on the books, and whatever our, you know, the ordinance will, will have to speak for itself for years to come, and we know the intent of, of what we're trying to do, or what this board's trying to do, but who, who's to speak of the next boards that come after us? They know this ordinance is on the books, and they could interpret it differently, they could, there, there could be a lot of things that happen with an ordinance like this, and an ordinance is, is, is a law, and I, I'm just, I'm just against the ordinance in general as the, as the city mandating it.
Alderman Dumas.
I like Alderman Parker, have received a lot of information, a lot of feedback on this, and I will say some was positive, some was negative, and again, it, like he, most of it dealt around the personal freedom aspect of things. Well, I told Mayor Wiseman earlier that, you know, I really struggled with that a lot over the last couple of days, and as I begin to look at it and I begin to process that, the simple matter of us being responsible, and I think Alderman Vaughn hit on this perfectly, the simple matter of us being responsible for the public safety, health, and welfare of this community really set the standard with me, and, you know, I dare say that everything we do, and I know this is debatable on a lot of things, but, you know, you look through most of the things we do, and a lot of it deals with the public health, safety, and welfare, and impacts the personal freedoms of a lot of people, if not everybody in the city of Starkville. And, and, and I made the, I made the, the comment to Ron and Linda that, you know, this was a no-brainer to me, then I caught the pun in that. Well, that's what it boils down to me, you know, I, I've got four children, I, I ride a bike myself, I'm the person on campus that's pushing for the bike stuff, the Student Association's doing it, I'm the head of sustainability, so these environmental things are key to me, and by no means do I want to impact the ridership of bicyclists, but at the end of the day, I know the responsibility of the city, and I see this as a good thing. And I do have at heart freedom, I do have at heart free, liberty, I do have all those things at heart, but at the same time, I think we are responsible for looking at these things, and that's why I do support this.
Further discussion. Alderman Carver.
I think most people understand my, my viewpoint, my take on this, but also, a lot of times, we've been hearing the comparison of automobiles and motorcycles, and I think that's comparing apples and oranges, when you try to compare a, a human-powered device to a two-thousand-pound piece of steel moving at, you know, four-hundred-fourth power behind, I just don't think you can compare bicycles to an automobile. Also, there's about four or five different things I've got issues with this, this ordinance, proposed ordinance. The second is the fifteen-dollar, the fine, I think it should be tied, you know, to maybe more of a civil, community service type fine instead of a monetary fine, and I think it's just going to be almost an unenforceable ordinance, and then University Drive also will be a, will probably be, probably be where we hear most of our complaints from the students, having to take helmets on and off, you know, as they get halfway to campus or to campus, and and should this become state law, if we're the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth state, I mean, I think we should comply then, but I just don't think that because I'm on this side of the table and you're on that side of the table, that I have the right to tell a grown man what to do, and, and vice versa. And so, this has been a pretty easy decision for me, because not only the way I feel about it, but I would say today, the hundred percent of the people that have contacted me at Ward One have been against it, so just, I disagree with what Alderman Dumas said, I think that we represent our constituents, you should listen to your constituents, and even though you may have a personal opinion, if the overwhelming majority of your constituents are far or against something, that you should vote that way, you are representative of the people, so that's why I will be against this ordinance or proposed ordinance.
Further discussion. Alderman Sistrunk.
Alderman Vaughn, I'll, I'll let him go next.
You know, I hear they saying, you know, ordinance, and my personal liberty, my freedom, we passed a no-smoking order. Counsel killed my father, law counsel, we passed a no-smoking order, ain't that your personal liberty? That's your freedom? What's most important? Your child life, a ticket, or helmet?
Alderman Sistrunk.
This has been a very difficult decision for me, I, I started out also with the opinion that it, it's absolutely a slam dunk. And the, Alderman Vaughn is very correct that the, that the controlling issue is, is public safety, that's our responsibility to ensure public safety. The question becomes, for me, at what point does this rise to the level of needing to legislate something? I would prefer that we use our efforts toward education, making sure that people get helmets, those sorts of ways of trying to encourage this use, as we're also encouraging the use of bikes. I've, I've checked, we've had three accidents over the last three years here in Starkville, three bike accidents that required a trip to the hospital for the cyclist. I've also tried to find some cities where these, these ordinances have been in place for a while and see how they worked in those cities. The, the, the best example I found was Austin, Texas, which implemented this, a, a similar ordinance, probably in the late nineteen nineties, and what they found was that their enforcement was very much skewed, they're toward, the ticketed people tended to be poor and minorities. We, we may have that here, we may have something skewed towards students because of where, where the riding of bikes occurs. I believe gotten pretty much to the point in Austin that they no longer enforce their ordinance. I do, I do understand the need for the public safety, and I think at the point that we have more cyclists, more use of the streets, but alternative methods of transportation, that, that it will come to that level of an ordinance. That's not to come down on the side of the personal libertarians, because we do live in community, and part of living in community, whether it's an insurance pool or a, a city, is giving up some of those personal liberties.
Further discussion. Alderman Carver.
Just speaking further on the subject, was I was actually kind of leaning toward the first ordinance, because I, in my opinion, I believe that sixteen and under would have been a better, a better take on this than the overall concept of everybody having to wear a helmet. And I don't know what point it was changed, it says on our additional information that, you know, the first ordinance proposed was designed to acquire the helmets for children sixteen years of age and under, and then we were told that this was changed due to the fact that more accidents happened. The police chief has recommended to the mayor and Board of Alderman that the ordinance include all operators of these methods of transportation. The research from accident reconstruction experts indicates that most of the injuries occurred to the population not covered under the proposed ordinance, meaning sixteen and over, and then according to the data we've given tonight, it says each year, and this is from the Brain Injury Institute, or Association of America, says each year about five-hundred-sixty-seven thousand people go to the hospital with bicycle-related injuries, and about three-hundred-fifty thousand are the majority of, of those injuries are to children under fifteen, so we were, I think, as a board misled at some point. There's just been, you know, two different fact, or points of opinion, and I don't know which one, and why we ran one, but, and it's just conflicting information, is I don't know, you know, we were told one thing as Board of Alderman, and then we got presented from the same group that are, you know, just conflicting, conflicting side, conflicting information on this, so, again, I'd be more leaning toward an ordinance for sixteen and under, just because I think that a child's still learning how to ride a bicycle, I think that university, or the university crowd, the students and whatnot, I just don't think we have the right to tell a, a university student and above an adult to ride, to wear a helmet while riding a bicycle.
And a little, little clarification on that, I, I, I don't think those necessarily contradict each other, is the conversation that took place was the, the chief and his two accident reconstructionists telling me anecdotally, yeah, the, the scenes they've worked here, and they, they, they said our scenes are almost exclusively over the age of sixteen, and, you know, that, that may be a bit different as to what trends or, or statistical data elsewhere shows, but that's, that's kind of how you have those two different pieces of information. Alderman Court.
I was going to speak to that, too, it's my understanding that the information the police chief gave us was based on our actual accidents here in town, whereas the information presented before us tonight was based on national trends.
Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me weigh on this very briefly, you know, this, this ordinance is not difficult, and let me say, I want to thank everyone for their comments, their pros and their cons on this matter, and that's what government's all about, we want to hear from everybody before we make these important decisions. But this ordinance is not a difficult thing for me to vote on, I'll tell you why, because it promotes the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. I've seen a lot of these ordinances come here across this table over the years, and as long as these ordinance promotes health, safety, and welfare, I'm going to support the ordinance. I can go back in time when we considered the no-smoking ordinance here in the city of Starkville, there are a lot of people that landed the walls in this room, came before this board, talked about the freedom of issue, how, you know, they shouldn't smoke in public places, but now you see with the enactment of the ordinance, it has done great things to our community, there are other municipalities in, in the state of Mississippi who are following behind the, the city of Starkville, it's great leadership on this, this issue. You can look at the seatbelt law of, and from the state legislature point of view, there was reluctance in a lot of rural communities to wear seatbelts, but now that it's the law, because it is designed to promote health, safety, and welfare. Likewise, this is a good. Likewise, this is a good measure. We're trying to reduce injuries. You know, we heard from the lady who drove miles from the Flor County this evening with the daughter, it's a clear illustration. You know, we hear from many talking about a personal freedom issue, and, you know, and we support students in our community, and we are proud of the presence of the students in our community, but yet, at the same time, students and others, we are concerned about your safety, your welfare, anything that we can do to save a life, anything that we can do to eliminate an injury, that's what we stand up for, and that's what we should do. I think this is a good ordinance, and Alderman Vaughn mentioned a few minutes ago, you know, just back in September, the 16th, or thereabout, maybe, maybe in November, I don't remember the exact month, we had an ordinance here that we prohibit smoking on city properties, city vehicles, the city workplace. Why? Because we're trying to promote the health, safety, and welfare. I could sit here, and the list goes on and on. So we need to adopt this ordinance, and the mission statement says best. We're trying to reduce the incidence of disability, injury, and death. There's nothing wrong, that's undisputable. So I would say let's enact this ordinance, it's a good ordinance, and we need to go ahead and put it in full force and effect within the 30 days from the date of passage. So, before tonight, we, I think this is for the betterment for the entire community, including the college students. It's just, anytime you have a new measure, there's some reluctance. And yes, it is our responsibility, you know, this is not no mandate. We should legislate here. Anytime you're legislating for the betterment of the people, that is a great thing to do. Why? Because we are elected here to carry out the necessary leadership, and that is part of our duty, it's the police powers. That's one of our rights under the Constitution, to promote the health, safety, and welfare. So, in closing, Mr. Mayor, we need to go ahead and prove this self, heaven ordinance, it's a good ordinance, and it's great for the city of Starkville. Thank you.
And one quick thing, this one is a little different. It has a six-month period before it gets effective.
For the reason I said that, if you look at Section 7, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And Section 7, you can correct me if I'm wrong, maybe the ordinance is reading incorrectly, it says 30 days from the date of enactment. I think what you're referencing to the enforcement, you give your six-month period for applicability, you'll get two warnings within.
It's a grace period.
A grace period. So the ordinance goes into effect 30 days after.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further? Alderman Court.
I'll touch on it a little bit. I've weighed some of the pros and cons against it myself. I've gotten some feedback on it, some for, some against, and so I'm just not really sure how this ordinance was going to impact them. And I do have a lot of students in my ward, and I did think very heavily about the idea of whether this would impact their willingness to ride their bike, which is something, of course, we don't wanna dissuade people from doing, even though we wanna try to make sure that they are safe. Although my experience is colored a little bit by the fact that I've been bicycling myself, and the one time I didn't wear a helmet, because I do normally wear a helmet, I had my first bike accident. And fortunately, I hit my knee and not my head, but it happened just because I was just gonna go down the street to a friend's house and didn't wanna have to be bothered by running back in, grabbing my helmet, putting it on. And so, that, that left a pretty big impact with me. It also left a pretty good scar, but, and so, I just wanted to share that thought. I feel like this is a good ordinance. If, I feel like the potential is there for it to do a lot of good for our community. And I did weigh out the personal libertarian argument for this, and I did think about that a lot, and I thought, you know, if this were mandating helmets on private property, then that, you know, you could really talk some about that. But I kinda asked myself, who really owns the street? And the truth is, the community does, as a whole, and that's who we've heard from tonight, and that's who we're up here to represent, and so.
Further discussion. Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
The question's been moved. Any objection? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain, as the city clerk calls you now.
Alderman Carr.
Nay.
Alderman Sistrum.
Nay.
Nay.
Alderman Parker.
Nay.
Alderman Corey.
Yea.
Alderman Dumas.
Yea.
Alderman Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
By a vote of four in favor with three against, this measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of repealing and replacing the stormwater control ordinance. Alderman Parker?
I think, well, I think we had a discussion earlier. Mayor, I would, if the board has no other discussion, what they would like to talk about, I would move approval of the repeal and replacement of the Stormwater Ordinance 2006-07 and the amendment of the City of Starkville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, Environment, Article 6, Stormwater Control, as presented with the following correction to Page 9, Item 2A, Roman numeral 8, in that sentence after 100-year storm. You have a copy on your, on your desk, in front of you. Somebody have this? I've got it reduced to writing.
Oh, good. Fantastic.
Actually, I'll.
All right, the motion that Alderman Parker has reduced to writing is the approval of the repeal and replacement of the Stormwater Ordinance 2006-07 and the amendment of the City of Starkville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, Environment, Article 6, Stormwater Control, as presented with the following.
Correction.
Correction to Page 9, Item 2A, 8, in that sentence after 100-year storm. So that will.
That's correct.
And place a period after storm. And that's the end of that sentence.
So storm before, overtopping a levee is strictly.
Right.
And that has been reduced to writing. I am giving a copy to the city clerk. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Dumas. Alderman Parker, you wish to speak on merits?
No.
Any discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please answer yea, nay, or abstain, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Alderman Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Dumas.
Yea.
Alderman Corey.
Yea.
Alderman Parker.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Parker.
Yea.
By a vote of seven in favor with zero against, this measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is consideration for advertising for letters of interest for the vacant position on the Starkville School Board. Alderman Vaughn.
May I be recused, please?
You may.
Recused.
And we'll give Alderman Vaughn and Alderman Dumas a moment to act as required. Discussion. Alderman Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we advertise for letters of interest for the vacant position on the school board, and that said advertisement appear at least twice in the Starkville Daily News and the Starkville Dispatch with a deadline of 12 noon on Friday, April 30, 2010, and that we interview any said applicants at our first board meeting in May on May 4 of 2010, and that the letters of interest be turned in solely to Ms. Lynn Spruill, that Ms. Spruill be responsible for contacting any applicants to appear before the board for our meeting on May 4 of 2010.
All right, motion has been made by Alderman Perkins to advertise for letters of interest for the vacant position on the Starkville School Board, with a deadline for such letters to be submitted on April 30, 2010, and interviews to follow on May 4, 2010, and applications to be submitted to the care of Chief Administrative Officer Lynn Spruill. Alderman Perkins, that's your motion.
A couple things you left out, the deadline on April 30, 2010 at 12 noon, and that the letters of interest appear in the Starkville Daily News and the Starkville Dispatch at least twice.
Okay. And the rest of it was correct?
Yes, sir.
So that is a deadline of April 30, 2010 at 12 noon, and appear at least twice in the Starkville Daily News and the Starkville Dispatch. Is that the entirety of your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Corey. Discussion.
Mayor, by the way, I'm asking the city attorney, we can limit this just to individuals within Starkville School District, considering the agey opinion that we can't accept a third candidate from outside of the added territory.
You know, I think the word's out there that we cannot see a person in the added territory, and that's been hashed out in the media, so let the applications come in, and that's known out in the public.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes. The, we'll give Alderman Dumas and Alderman Vaughn a second to get back in the room.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
All right, the next matter on the agenda is the presentation of comments from the Pat Station Public Hearing and Discussion resulting from said hearing. Had what I feel was a productive hearing last night, certainly some passionate discussion. One of the things that was explicitly asked of the board by concerned homeowners in the area adjacent to the potential Pat Station Road project was that there were, I guess, three requests for a response from the city as to questions about the process leading up to this. And I think this is a good place for us to start the discussion. I have had the city attorney working with the city engineer and the city planner, who's also the floodplain manager for the city extensively today, and Chris, do you wanna start us off?
Sure. Do you wanna discuss the floodplain issue first, or the minutes issue?
Whichever order you think it explains the best.
Let me just start with a little timeline, just to recap everybody's memory on how this project has evolved. Back in October of 2009, October 6 of 2009, this board authorized moving forward on the Pat Station Road project, and approved holding a public meeting to discuss the project. Then on November 17 of 2009, in a board meeting, the mayor announced the public meeting. The public meeting was set for November 23 of '09 and occurred on that date. Then on January 19 of 2010, the board entered executive session to consider purchasing land from a particular property owner based on a proposed design change in the road. The board approved, came out of executive session, and entered an order approving additional survey, engineering, and appraisal work necessary for the acquisition of that property based on the design change. Then on March of this year, March 2, the board authorized advertising for bids for the Pat Station Road project. The bids were specced based on the new design. The advertisement went out publicly, and the new specs were available to the public at any time in the city engineer's office. Then on the board meeting of April 6, 2010, the board called for an additional public meeting with respect to Pat Station Road, and set that meeting for April 19 of 2010, and as the mayor alluded to, that meeting occurred last night. One of the issues that was raised in the meeting last night was that there's no record in the minutes of the current plan being approved by the board of Alderman, and that's not true when you look back at the minutes. The current plan was approved by the board based on the board's authorization for additional engineering, surveying, and appraisal work, which would not have been necessary but for the new design that they approved. Secondly, the board has authorized the project to be bid out based on the new specs, based on the new design for the road. This is all in the minutes, and the minutes speak to these issues. Further, the advertisements have gone out and were public, and the new design specs have been available for public inspection at any time during regular business hours in the city engineer's office. And further, there's been a second public meeting on the issue, when constitutionally, a public hearing is not required for the building of this road. So I feel like we're on solid legal ground as far as the decisions that the board made and how the minutes speak to that decision. The next issue was how does this project affect flooding? And I posed several questions to our city engineer, Edward Kemp, today. One of the accusations is that this road would be a flood barrier, and he assures me that it will not. Another accusation was that it would divert, or unnaturally divert, floodwaters. And again, the city engineer has assured me that it would not. Another issue was, will this road increase flood hazards to other lands? And the city engineer's answer was that he didn't envision that to happen, that the grades of the roads are very closely matching, and that future flooding and flooding to other lands would not be an issue. The area is in the flood zone AE area, which means that permitting may be required if it's identified as a special flood hazard, and the city engineer has assured me that Starkville will go through all the property permitting requirements called for in our floodplain ordinance. And finally, the argument was about flooding, that the road falls within a floodway, and the city engineer assures me that that's not the case. So based on his representations, I don't believe that flooding is an issue, relying on his expertise and experience and familiarity with our regs regarding flooding. Another issue was that this was going to trigger our wetland ordinances, and the city engineer and I also talked about that, and he said he's spoken to the engineer on the project, Mr. Clyde Pritchard, who I know is in attendance tonight, and the lake in question is a man-made lake. Wetlands don't seem to be triggered by this. There's a map from the National Wetland Inventory that doesn't show that any of this road attaches to any wetland areas, and so wetlands are not a concern. And then finally, the argument was made that this violates Mississippi's Antiquities Law, and the policy behind that law is to protect historic landmarks, sunken pirate treasure, archaeological sites that have meaning, and none of those issues, burial grounds for Indians, none of those issues are at play in the area that's gonna be extended by Pat Station Road. So, all four of those concerns, I don't think legally should stop this project from going forward.
And y'all have anything to add on the flood, wetlands issues?
No, Ben and I both got together today and pulled out the flood maps after you had submitted your list of questions, and, you know, we went through the ordinance. This is a relatively new ordinance passed earlier this year, so we pulled it out and went through it line by line, and feel like the development of the roadway is allowed in our ordinance. We don't feel like we're violating that with this project. At your desk, you'll also see a report. Many of you were at the public meeting last night. We tried to comprise all the comments, the first few sheets, there's about three of them. Behind that, you'll see an attendance sheet of who's there, and then the presentation that was presented near the back, you'll see. We did receive two letters. One was received by the mayor's office, and then I received one via email last night, so those are included in the package as well. So, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to do a best.
I just wanna add one thing. Just a portion of the road is in the flood, is in a floodplain area, not the entire length of the road. Actually, it's right at the intersection of Old West Point Road, so it's not like the entire road is being built in a floodplain, it's just a small portion of it.
And are there any questions or comments on that analysis from the members of the board?
I've got a question, but it's not on that analysis. Do you want me to wait, or?
Yeah, let's, let's get through this part of it first, and then we'll move to the consideration of it in a second. Any question or comments on the issues presented? All right. Seeing none, let's move into the consideration of the low bid for the Pat Station roadway project. Alderman Dumas, would you like to speak?
I will. Ms. Morgan, you brought a map, and I-
I will. Ms. Morgan, you brought a map. And I'm concerned what's shown on that map. I won't, and Doug, you may be the one to answer this. When she's talking about utility easements or waterway construction and those types of things, you know, we've seen roadway construction maps and we've seen other things there. And the disturbance of land is, will there be additional disturbance due to waterline construction outside of that that will be disturbed by the road?
Outside of the...
Outside of the right of way and the construction of this initial north lane, the project we're talking about, just the north two lanes.
Yeah, we need to, we need to cross over to the south side, but we're going to stay on the right of way once we get on the south side. I think that the issue with citizens I talked to today was clearing trees along that south edge of the right of way that installs waterline. But it'll be on the north side down to the end of the day property. And then it'll cross over to the south side.
And so it will cross at that point and go not only south of the two-lane road we're talking about, but it will go south of the anticipated two-lane road as well.
Yeah, we're trying to accommodate the footprint of the piece of land.
So that will disturb more land than will be cleared for this, this project. And how far is that disturbance from the property line? And how far is that disturbance from the northern edge of that? I'm guessing that's Trotter Lane, those homeowners on Trotter Lane. How far is that disturbance from the property line?
It's right on the property line. About 30 feet, 30 foot of construction used from the property line, approximately 30 foot north of the property line.
And we're banding in the north side route because of easement issues?
His problem's something he popped out of his head in a second.
Okay.
While we're crossing over.
Any further questions? All right. Let me make some comments because I fielded a lot of questions last night on the policy aspect of this road. And I've spent a lot of time today going over and back over and back over again the policy reasons for this road project and policy reasons that I feel make it a very significant road project. This is one piece that's missing of an existing roadway that in North Starkville will connect, will form a solid connection from the 82 bypass to the 25 bypass. As I said last night, I'll get to some of the transportation issues in a second. I think probably one of the major factors that was driving this project in the beginning is, in my mind, the most significant factor. And that is the ability to extend fire coverage that you get from this project. And I had a conversation with the chief today. The immediate impact is that you take what is now a 2.4 mile radius from Fire Station 3 to Old West Point Road, and you make it a one mile radius, which is a tremendous difference for fire coverage. Additionally, you take 22 interchanges that those emergency service providers have to cross and you reduce them to two. And where that's significant is, of course, anytime a speeding fire truck crosses an intersection, it's a significant hazard potentially. So that's the immediate effect. Perhaps more significantly, the plan for this is to eventually be able to locate a new Fire Station 3 or relocate Fire Station 3 further down this road. Without the connection all the way to the bypass, that's, there would be no point in doing that. And with the new fire station and the fire station where it is with potential access, but even more so when that fire station is relocated, that's how you get full coverage of the bypass. Subsequent conversations the chief has had or that with the ratings bureau, they've confirmed that this project in particular is something that could positively affect our buyer rate. Now, all of that is part of the policy impetus that went into this in the first place. Another part of it that's very important, too, is the transportational aspect of it. This is a road project that would provide a corridor in North Starkville that would touch access points at all three major points of the bypass. We're also going to get a similar connection on the south side of town, where actually outside of town, but on the south area of town with the Poorhouse Road project. I think this is a very positive development from a transportational standpoint for the city. We cannot continue to push all of our traffic through Highway 12. It will cause greater and greater issues. Now, I understand there's disturbances associated with this project. I wish there was some way to eliminate it. The reality is, in the course of the conversation last night, as you talked about, even theoretically, which it's really not possible at this point, moving that road northward, then you quickly began to get comments from residents on the northern side that might be adversely affected by that. The reality is, building a road anywhere in a city is going to cause some disturbance. And I'm not unsympathetic to it. I understand it and my heart definitely goes out to you. But in looking out for the city as a whole in making a policy decision, I think there's very clear policy grounds for this project. Now, I also do think there's an urgency associated with it because this project has gone out of bid. And as I've noted throughout this, there were change of circumstances that were caused by events beyond our control. And that process in hindsight could have been managed better by us. But we are where we are now. And if that bid expires on this project, it is a very big deal. This project is already pushing the budget. It is right smack on the budget line. The engineer on the project and the city engineer have said repeatedly, if you rebid a project after everybody in the bidding pool has had a chance to view everybody else's bid, you will not get the same bid. This project coming back at $50,000 or $100,000 higher, whatever it may be, while it's already out of budget, would be an extreme obstacle because that means something else somewhere else in the capital improvement plan would have to be cut. So I think failing to take action on this tonight places it in extreme jeopardy. And even though I'm not unsympathetic to concerns of the residents, I do think it is in the vital interest of the city that this project go forward. Discussion.
Mayor, I've got a question. What is the difference, I wasn't out there last night, what is the difference between the base bid amount and base bid plus alternate A? What is the alternate?
I can answer that. And what our engineer, consulting engineer did in the plans is he put an alternate in there. Part of the base material for the pavement was crushed limestone, gravel essentially. He put an alternate in there to replace that crushed gravel, crushed limestone with recycled crushed concrete. It's becoming a more standard practice. We were able to reuse some concrete that, you know, was pulled off of the same, of a different job. It still has to meet certain criteria as far as specifications, but it does reduce, usually reduce pretty significantly the cost because you are getting a reused recycled material.
By doing that, I notice it's the only, I guess it's the only bid that comes in under budget of $37,000 less than the base bid. But what about the longevity of the road? Does the road hold up just as well as that crushed?
Yeah, and Clyde, if you want to interject, he's done several.
My last example, Alderman, I was off to college, seeing a boulevard on campus. If you go just construction behind the dormitory, that's crushed concrete, subways, if you will, and also eight floors, one stone boulevard. If you turn around or deep water, bathing in oil, several other. We had it meet the same criteria as crushed limestone. Just give us off here to, essentially recycle and use, you know, something that would otherwise be worth. Longevity, long term for runway, you can say, you know.
We, you know, we would bring forth a proposal for y'all's review if we didn't feel confident in it. I mean, if I had some concerns, I'd rather come back and ask for more, for more money, you know, to take the base bid than to take the alternate, for sure.
It's not an experimental process. We have it on the ground in a lot of areas and have that for several years.
Further discussion?
If we have an executive session question, as was indicated, is it, how do we need to handle that?
We can. We would just need to go into closed session to determine whether there's a need to move into executive session. And that would require a motion.
At any time?
At any time.
I mean, does the board feel like we need...
Yeah, I've got some considerable questions about that. So I'd like to go into a closed session.
All right. Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Your motion from Alderman Dumas to move into a closed session to determine whether there is a need to go into executive session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. We will give the room a moment to clear. We're going to move into a closed session. And Doug, I assume you'll need to stay on this one. Okay, meeting will now come back to order. The discussion that was just had, of course, executive session matters related to pending litigation, which was the reason for going into executive session, that I can't discuss. But I do want to brief everybody on what it was an attempt to do was to figure out as much as we could figure out about the water main that will potentially go in the area in the future. And unlike the second phase of the road, the water main is something that will inevitably happen and it won't be too far down the road. That's why the board members had concerns and want to make sure we ironed it out. And the conclusion of that is essentially that it's premature to determine the route that that water main's going to take. What I can tell you, as was the reason for going into the executive session, is that each of the board members are concerned with it, how it will affect property owners when the time comes to decide how that water main is going to be constructed. There will be a conversation on the front end throughout the process to determine how to best mitigate any disturbance caused to adjacent homeowners. Anybody have anything to add? Okay. Further discussion on the project?
I'll say a few things. I will have to say I wholeheartedly agree with the concept of the project. As we look at the comprehensive plan, as we amend the comprehensive plan, as you hear the details discussed with the fire rating bureau, as you look at all these things beside this road, I think it's good. But I want to say also that I greatly sympathize with those impacted by this road. And it gives me comfort to know that there, the road is to the north of the right of way, so the naturalized barrier is there. And I am going to support this. But I can tell you and I can give you my word at this point that I will do everything that we can within the, whatever infrastructure issues are there, from water, whatever else happens with this project, if and when the road ever happens, that we'll do everything we can. I can do everything in my power to help mitigate the impacts of what this thing can be. I think Mayor Wiseman said great. I think he put it pretty well when he talked about the overall community context and the impact of greater community. And that's what I have to make this decision on. So I think it's a good project. And I look forward to it, helping the city of Starkville.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? There is no motion pending.
Mayor, I'll do it. I move approval of the low bid for the Pat Station roadway project and authorization to enter into contractual agreement with said contractor. Wait, let me start over. Let me start over. I found my better language. It's recommended, based on the bids, it's a move that we approve that Ellis Construction is the lowest and best bidder and to authorize entering into a contractual agreement to provide the necessary work to complete the Pat Station roadway project.
Alderman Sistruck has made a motion that based on bids, it is recommended to approve, Alderman Sistruck has moved to approve Ellis Construction based on bids as the lowest and best bidder and to authorize entering into a contractual agreement to provide the necessary work to complete the Pat Station roadway project. Alderman Sistruck, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Dumas. Alderman Sistruck, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Discussion by the members of the board.
Mayor, is that the base bid amount or the base bid with alternate A? Over to which one of those were you referring?
It is the one that comes to the total amount of $977,000.
That would be base bid with the...
Base bid with the...
That's what's recommended.
Does that make your flag in the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Measure clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the approval of a City of Starkville tree board and the appointment of members to said committee. Discussion?
I brought this to the, to the board. Check in my notes.
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I see the constituents are still here. So basically with the bid the city just voted, we had to proceed with the work on the road. It's outlawed last night.
That's correct.
On the five to one, what is it, six to one vote?
Six to one vote.
I was on the negative.
You were on the negative. Alderman Dumas, tree board.
Looking for my notes. My tree board notes, I think I've got them. I want to just briefly mention these names.
Correct, Mr. Mayor. I didn't vote.
No vote.
No vote.
Okay, let's take that one by roll call for the record. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain on the motion by Alderman Sistruck to approve the bids for the Pat Station project as the city clerk motioned.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistruck?
Yea.
Alderman Parker?
Yea.
Alderman Corey?
Yea.
Alderman Dumas?
Yea.
Alderman Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Bond?
Abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
A vote of five in favor with one against and one abstention, this measure passes. All right, now move to discussion on the Tree Board.
As was mentioned from Chris Campney, I want to reread the first part of this. We propose the formation of a tree advisory board for the City of Starkville. The tree advisory board would be composed of area tree experts who assist, who will assist the city as needed on a voluntary basis. Duties will include assisting city employees on landscape and horticultural practices, developing plant lists, assisting in grant writing, coordinating events and opportunities with the Mississippi Urban Forestry Council, and promoting the overall tree health and urban forestry for the City of Starkville. I think it's very timely with the landscape ordinance, I think it's timely from the comprehensive planning phase of how we look at different aspects of our natural areas within the community. The motion I'll make will be to adopt the list of the people that are found within your, that was on the table in front of you. Just to briefly go over those lists, we have an arborist, Pam Collins, GIS specialist, Wayne Wilkerson, landscape architect, Brian Templeton. There's a to-be-determined master gardener, a urban forestry council representative, Steve Gredo, plant ecologist, Bob Brusak, tree and landscape ordinance specialist, which is Chris Campney, who spoke tonight, a horticulturist, Richard Harkis, and then a wildlife ecology expert, which is to be determined as well. So I make the motion, or I move that we approve the tree advisory board as written in the information presented on the table.
And Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve the City of Starkville Tree Board with a membership as reduced to writing and presented to the city clerk. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Corey. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on merits?
I do not.
Alderman Carver?
Seeing this is an advisory board, who do you propose to be the main liaison for the city in the landscaping department, or who's going to be the point of contact that these people will work for or work with?
Alderman Dumas?
I think, I think obviously we have, well, I think we have a couple of areas there. I think the landscape committee, Glenn Beverley, I think you're parks and wreck with the canopy that's found within our parks on the city. So I think Matthew Rye, I don't know if Matthew's here, I think he left. So I see a number of people there. I don't have anybody in mind as far as how they are an official liaison between that. Alderman Corey has put together the urban forestry workshop in May, and so I think it would be good for Alderman Corey to serve on that as far as a liaison, if he's interested.
I wouldn't mind having the, actually having the landscape architect professors during my awards.
There you go, so that's good.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Dumas, I don't think we need a superintendent on this advisory committee. We want to have some more, the department needs to have the public services director, he can get whatever resources he wants from the superintendent. I think we need to have a department head level person there, Mr. Devlin, if we want to get landscaping, he can draw in whatever resources he needs. I think that'll be the better protocol and way to do it.
I have no issues with that, so.
Does somebody want to make a motion? Is it on the list? That's not on, do you want to amend it?
Sure.
Can I say something before we get into all this? I mean, this was just, we just got this tonight. I would personally prefer to read over it, and I don't have a problem if we table it to the next meeting, not saying I would vote for it. If I have to vote tonight, I would have to vote against it because I just haven't had a chance to read any of it, and I haven't had a chance to review any of the names that were put on the board, so I would personally rather table it to the next week, and so we can review it. That's just my, if we had to vote tonight, that would be the reason that I had to vote no against it.
Well, there's.
Alderman Dumas, is this time sensitive, that you have an issue with being tabled?
No, no, it's not time sensitive, and I'd hope that this was in the packet, and I apologize for not being there. The, so I have no issues with this being a matter that's tabled.
Do we recognize?
You may.
I would like to see if this comes back before we sort of table the matter, but just that, you know, maybe more direction of who they will, if you have this, I think it's a good idea, but maybe if this, if they're more of a proactive advisory board, or will they be just, they can only answer when sought after if a city employee, you know, seeks their assistance, or would they be, like I said, more of a proactive, I think you may have them being more of a proactive board.
Right.
Entire them into the comprehensive plan, but it's just lacking something like that, some direction on who they're answering to and what they're actually will be doing.
If I might offer a procedural suggestion with motion pending, it's cleaner for agenda purposes if it's, motion is to postpone to the next meeting, that way it automatically comes up, so you don't have to worry about removing it from the table and whether that's going to be done or not, but can be done either way.
And you can postpone at this stage?
You can. You would just postpone the motion pending, and the motion would be on the agenda at the next meeting, rather than usual open-ended consideration.
Then I would move to postpone it until the next meeting.
Alderman Parker has made a motion to postpone the consideration of Alderman Dumas's motion to, until the May 4 meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Sistruck. Alderman Parker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I'd just like to meet with Alderman Dumas sometime between here and there, and we can sit down and go over some of the details. That's the summary.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is consideration of P&amp;Z item number RZ 10-01, a request by Mr. Carlos White for a zoning change from R1 to R3.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Perkins.
Mr. Griffith, will you just briefly come forward and tell us what is allowable in
You said?
What is allowable in a R3 zone?
In an R3 zone, single-family, two-family, three-family, and four-family dwelling units.
Basic apartments.
Well, an apartment per R, per R code is five units or more per structure. So up to a fourplex.
Okay, in R3?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And as are permitted by right in an R3.
How much of this property is R3, do you know?
Approximately half, the southern half.
Discussion, further discussion? Alderman Carver?
And the majority of your reconsideration of the zoning would be off the hospital expansion? Is that your main basis for the consideration of the rezoning would be the hospital expansion as far as change in the character of the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Has there been, I don't know the history of Hospital Road, has there been a bunch of zoning changes on the other side, on the eastern side?
No, it's been in place, the C1 has been in place for a while. I couldn't give you a history on that, but that C1 in the overlay zone is something that would be considered, and I've kind of thought about it, but this, I don't know if the rezoning is really the way to look at it, and Mr. Latimer will probably have to review that as well, but one of the things I think that was a concern was the C1 zone also allows other uses that were not centered or focused on hospital or medical type uses. The medical overlay zone, if it was to be expanded to include this five acres, and of course we had guidelines to go along with that, which we don't at this time, I think with, again, I'm a big believer in overlay zones, that that would probably provide some certain degree of, you know, specific types of uses, but again, we don't have that in place, but that's something to think about, you know, for the future for that. So there's an overlay zone now? There's an overlay zone now, and this property is adjacent to it, but it's not part of it, it's immediately adjacent to it. And overlay, that zone tells us that the C1 can only be used for certain medical? Right, it could. Right now, all it tells us is there's an overlay zone in place. We have zones that are identified on our map, but we don't have any guidelines that go with them. And it's one of the things that I know Alderman Dumas has brought up during discussions with the comprehensive plan, and something that needs to be done in the future.
Can you do an overlay zone to make it site or specific, or an surety that it would only be medical, I'm going to jump a subject a little bit, but can you do an overlay zone to make it be specifically medically related?
Well, in any type of overlay zone, what you have is you have the underlying zoning and those uses. When you have an overlay zone, that's like another layer on the cake there, and what that does is you can limit or make specific uses. For instance, in a medical overlay zone, it would be doctor's office, dental office, medical type uses. What you would probably want to do is to leave out the less desirable uses, such as a convenience store, a gas station, I believe those were some of the uses that some of the area residents were opposed to that were allowed by rights. You can strike those, you can focus those uses, or you can even add to them, or you can do different things, design guidelines, increase or decrease setbacks, again, just in that overlay district. So the limitation on the uses is what's, is what's the real, it's real focus on an overlay zone, any overlay zone, but in particular for medical.
And when you say lack of guidelines, that means that we have not descriptively said within any overlay district that these uses will no longer be allowed within?
Yes, sir.
The underlying.
Not for any of, we have them identified on our map.
So what he's saying is, as far as the C1 is concerned, are, and off this map, east on Hospital, is that all C1? Or is there some C2 in there as well?
East is C1, yes.
So even though there's an overlay district, we offer no descriptive guidelines as saying these are the only allowable uses. It's an overlay zone that does nothing but offer a different color on the map.
Basically.
So, and I'll speak just to that, and I keep going back to the comprehensive plan, but I think the comprehensive plan was a thorough document, I wasn't a part of that, but I think there's much weight that should be given to the fact that there is a natural barrier here. I think there's considerable issues when you begin to look at the creep of different uses across natural barriers, whether that be Hiwasi or whatever it is, to interrupt the integrity of not only the Carver Drive area, but those areas west of Hospital Road. Now, if, considering that we are going through this comprehensive planning amendment phase, and when we look at the broader context of what's in and above this map that we have in the document, and we deem that these areas of Hospital Road warrant a medical overlay, I think I would be more comfortable at that scale of determination, much better than I am at this, so I think there's some dynamics there that, I think the integrity of the neighborhood is sound in its current state, more so than otherwise. Further discussion?
So with the P&amp;Z meeting, the hospital had not started construction, the fact that it has started construction, does that have any bearing on our decision? Mr. Latimer?
Yeah, the law is, has there been a change in the neighborhood to justify the proposed rezoning? And the timeline is at the time this board acts and makes the decision, so you could consider any change that's been into effect up till now, but not anything that's on the books that hasn't started yet.
Further discussion?
But as far as the, and I guess to go back to that question, I mean, the, as far as the change in context from said site, whatever jurisdictional bounds you want to put on it, the context changed none with the development and the construction of the hospital. It will still zone C1 in its prior state, we just made the hospital bigger.
That's my understanding, yes.
I mean, nothing contextual change outside of just, as far as zoning or any of those type things, we just made the hospital bigger.
I was just confirming with the city attorney to see if there was a necessity to take action on this, and he said there is a necessity because P&amp;Z is just advisory, so the board has to deal with it in finality.
So I guess the motion would be to either uphold the decision or to, do we repeal and approve?
You can make a motion to approve the recommendation of denial by the P&amp;Z.
Mayor, board, I move that we approve the recommendation of denial from planning and zoning.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve the recommendation of denial by the Planning and Zoning Commission on P&amp;Z item number RZ 10-01, a request by Mr. Carlos White for a zoning change from R1 single-family and R3 multifamily to C1 neighborhood commercial located at the southwest corner of Hospital Road and Hiwasi Drive in Ward 6. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Corey. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, please answer yea, nay, or abstain, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistruck?
Yea.
Alderman Parker?
Nay.
Alderman Corey?
Yea.
Alderman Dumas?
Yea.
Alderman Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
By a vote of five in favor with two against, this measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration to approve P&amp;Z item number FP 08-08, a request by Mr. Tommy Dabs for approval of Highway 12 extension property Phase 1, a final plat in a C2 zoning district. Mr. Griff?
I realized it was so quick when I had one, I'm sorry. Mr. Dabs is going to join me. Item FP 08-08 is a request by Mr. Tommy Dabs for approval of the Highway 12 extension property Phase 1, a final subdivision plat located in a C2 general business zoning district. The subject property is located on the eastern side of Highway 12E, south of the intersection of Pat Station Road and Ward 5. The applicant is proposing a final commercial subdivision plat of two lots and common area for an approximate 2.36 acre site. A preliminary plat was approved by the P&amp;Z in August of 2007 and by the Board of Aldermen in January of 2008. The City of Starkville will provide all utilities to the site. The streets are private, not to be dedicated, or, excuse me, not to be offered to the city for dedication, and a note has been placed on the plat acknowledging this. Temporary stormwater facilities have been proposed for the existing development but have not yet been built. And per the city attorney's direction, a bond has been provided to cover the cost of construction of these facilities. The P&amp;Z unanimously recommended approval of the Phase 1 final plat as proposed with 14 conditions proposed by city staff and approved by the city attorney.
Questions, comments for Mr. Griffith? Discussion?
Is this the landlord of the new clinic?
It's the Federal Land Bank, the dental clinic, and that also includes the one that's under construction now, and then the access road and the front road in front of both of those, that's the common area. Is that right? That's right.
Where are we with the construction of the stormwater pond?
Well, what originally was proposed and approved is a temporary pond, and the contractor was on site to do that, then a concern raised by the public works about the pond being posed by sending to an existing sewer line with the real shower, and they were concerned about that might adversely affect the sewer line. So what we've come back and done is we're going to, rather than having a pond, we're going to put underground detention in form of pipes. And I've spoken, of course, with Edward, and we've come up with the plan and what to do there. Contractor, of course, had to get it approved by the property owner since he was in the paper, he must give us. The contractor, I've talked with him, he's got the materials on hand, make sure we can get all the fittings to do with, and he's ready to put it in, starting this in the next day or two.
So those pipes would be, would those storage pipes still be on the temporary side or on the permanent?
No, that would turn into a permanent.
That's a permanent solution.
Sure would.
There are, there are 12 staff recommendations?
Yes, we've already changed, made all those changes.
So you've already met all 12 staff?
We've done all of them.
Does that include all the subparts? Because there are 17 subparts to those 12 conditions.
Yes, we've gone through the list that Ben gave us, and we've done all those, made those changes, I haven't given it back to him because we were making sure we got the stormwater worked out first.
I'm sorry, I missed that last one, you said you had or had not given it back to?
I have not given it back to Ben yet, because we were making sure that we could get the stormwater problem worked out.
Okay. So at this point?
So, at this point, Ben couldn't opine, and Edward couldn't opine as to whether those conditions have been met or not?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I move approval of the request by Mr. Tommy Dabs for final plat approval of Highway 12 Extension Phase 1 dated April 6, 2010, conditional on the fulfillment of the 12 recommendations and 17 listed sub recommendations.
Motion has been made by Alderman Dumas to approve the request of Mr. Tommy Dabs for final plat approval of Highway 12 Extension Phase 1 dated April 6, 2010 with, or conditioned upon 12 recommendations and 17 sub recommendations as proposed by city staff.
It is, and I want to ask the city attorney to verify that motion as far as meeting the...
The effect of that motion is that the buck will now stop from a decision standpoint with our department heads, when they review to see if the conditions have been met, and when each of them sign the plat. With that motion, this board gives up its control of the project.
Is that your motion?
No, I, I, do you recommend that as the way to move, to move ahead forward, or?
The normal course in the projects that, that we do is that conditions be met prior to final plat approval. This project, as you all know, has been different based on various things, like trying to meet go-zone depreciation rates, and it is not tracked along the normal course. That's why the item went to the P&amp;Z with so many conditions in the first place. Legally, there's nothing wrong, I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that the people making those final decisions would be the department heads rather than the board if it's conditionally approved.
I'm okay with that.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Corey. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes.
All right. No?
Next matter before you is the request for authorization to advertise for a vacant deputy court clerk position. Do I hear any discussion?
Does it specify the date applicants need to be, need to have their submissions in? Because I think this was added to our packet last, last minute, and I wanted to make sure.
Mr. Boyd?
This is a request to advertise, we'll, we'll, for applications to advertise the fill of vacant position.
Right, no, I was asking if there was a date set for when you wanted those applications in, so we could include that in the motion.
We will start the advertising this coming Sunday, and it will conclude Tuesday, the following week, which would be May 4th, I think.
And this is to, of course, refill a position that's about to become vacant because we have an employee that's about to leave?
Have an employee that notified us today that should be leaving on the form of Detective May 7.
Okay. Mayor and Board, I move that we authorize the advertisement of position of vacant deputy court clerk with applications to be submitted by May 4, 2010.
Alderman Corey has made a motion to approve the authorization to advertise for vacant, a vacant deputy court clerk position with applications to be due by May 4, 2010. Is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Sistrak. Alderman Corey, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. All right, that is all of our regular session agenda. The remaining items are executive session items. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session to determine the need for executive session?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Corey to move into closed session to determine whether there is need for an executive session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Parker. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. We'll give everybody a moment to clear the room and move into closed session. give everybody a moment to clear the room and move into closed session.